Kind of hit the refresh button and have you facilitate this short meeting? So that we can rededicate our efforts to a student outcome focused governance. So without any further ado, I will hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you so much for having me. It's great to be here with you, joining from Dallas at the conference and excited about continuing to work with the board. Just first, by way of introduction, my name is A.J. Crable. I'm one of the school board coaches at the council. And really, our work is centered around supporting school boards that just want to be more intensely focused on improving student outcomes. And so what that often looks like is working with school boards to get a sense of what it is that you all, where are the areas that you want to grow in? And what are the things that you all believe would make a difference? And then helping you all get there. What that looks like for a lot of folks is making sure they're clear about their priorities as job one. You all have already done this. You've identified what your priorities are as you've gone out and listened for the vision values of your community. And you've codified those into your, and to set us priorities that you've already adopted, who we refer to as goals and guardrails in this work. Once boards have priorities in place, then the next step is how do we begin to bend and mold the different aspects of our organization? And the way that we function as a board to be in alignment with those priorities? To make sure that the vision of the community, our goals are really driving the work of our school system. And the values of our community, our guardrails are being honored along the journey. And so that's what the next phase looks like. So while the first phase is about clarifying those priorities, which you've done, the next phase is really about putting those priorities into action on a day to day basis, both in the work of the board and in the work of the administration. So one major next step that often happens is that when boards want to begin making systemic changes to be more focused on student outcomes, is it, it helps to really plan that out. And so it's, this isn't something that's, it's useful to just talk about it. You really want to make sure that you have a plan for it. And so part of the way that we normally accomplish that with most districts is it will take time to interview board members. It'll take time to interview the superintendent and key staff as directed. And then use that to develop a timeline that says, okay, here's where you are. Here's where you all say you want to be. And what are all the individual steps that need to take place to get you from point A to point B? And so for most of our districts, that's really the next big piece of the puzzle is developing that implementation timeline by taking time to listen to each board member and get a sense of where, where do you want to be? Identifying where you are and then, and then helping you month by month by month with implementing your timeline on how to get there. And so that's the next big piece of the puzzle. There, there's a lot of smaller elements we can go through, but I certainly want to be responsive to some of your inquiries about the process. So let me pause for a moment and just inquire, what questions do you have about just the pieces I've described before I try to go in a little bit deeper detail?
Does anybody have any questions for him? There, there doesn't seem to be any questions.
All right. Then let me offer just one more deeper layer of detail, which I suspect usually does inspire a lot more question. So some of the key things, what does it mean to take the priorities from your community? And, and really forcibly modify how we as a board operate and some of the function of our school system to be in alignment with our community's priorities? So a few items that come up frequently. One of those is just a general policy review to look at, to what extent are the policies we have alignment? What a lot of districts, what a lot of boards find out is that their policies have been on the books since before some board members were born. And that sometimes those continue to align with the vision and values of the community and sometimes they don't. And so a revisiting of board policy and potential pruning down of policies that are no longer in alignment, or consideration of policies that would be necessary for alignment is common. Adjacent to that policy review work is also looking at operating procedures, which is one of the things that you're working on right now. Is trying to think through, what would it take in order to make sure that the way that we operate actually lines up with a focus on improving student outcomes? The reason that this is such a big part of the puzzle is because how you use your time is a really, really valuable resource. And so if your current operating procedures don't give a lot of detail about how you use your time and how to organize that time to be focused on student outcomes, what happens in most school boards nationwide, or at least across the council, is that board meeting time often winds up focusing on just about everything except for whether or not student outcomes are actually improving. And so one of the things that we're going to propose to you as part of this journey is to take another look at your operating procedures and start to ask yourself, what are the things in these operating procedures that we need to modify? That could really help us be more focused on student outcomes? I want to walk through a few specific examples of that, that are things that based on feedback that you all offered, that we've already started the process of trying to think through, what would that look like in reality? And so if, unless you have other questions you want to dive into first, I, I want to walk through some of the recommended ideas that we have. Did you have any, any questions before I dove into some of those ideas for policies?
Yes.
Thank you, A.J. This is Juan Benitez. So, A.J., in, in your, I guess, review of the, some of the recommendations, will you clarify for us what you mean by, or what we understand to be operating procedures?
Yeah. So when you think of operating procedures, what we're thinking about is what are the policies that we've developed that really lean into how do we function as an entity? So for example, one of the things that's in there is how does a agenda get created? That's something about how we as a board function as an entity. Do we have specificity on what are the sort of things that we would want to focus our time on? Versus what are the things that we would want to lean away from focusing our time on? The, the board gets the final say. I mean, it's the board's meeting, it's the board's agenda. The board, I mean, the board alone is afforded by law, really gets to say, how do we spend our time? And some boards have been really intentional about codifying in their operating procedures, what would that look like? And other boards, it, there's nothing that speaks to that. And so it really is just kind of up to what makes the most sense to your officers and your superintendent in that moment. What we would recommend for boards that really want to be intentional about intensifying their focus on student outcomes is that it's helpful to actually be declarative in this area of here's what we think is the most optimal use of our time as elected representatives of the community. And, and the board gets to say that. And so that's an example of an area where, listening to some of the feedback the board members have provided, that we could certainly offer some recommendations on what would it look like to have language in your operating procedures that leans into how do we organize an effective school board meeting? Or it could be, you know, if it's not related to the agenda, it could be related to communications. If it's not related to communications, it could be related to how concerns are handled when they come up. Or any number of other topics that board members find important. That all of those are examples of things that describe how do we as a board operate? And again, as, as the elected representatives, you can choose to say nothing on any of these topics and really just have what happens next is kind of be a judgment call from day to day. We just typically don't recognize that because that rarely results in board behavior that is as intentional as you want to be. But instead, what makes more sense is for you all to write down and make plain, here's what we think is the optimal way for us to operate. That this really brings the most focused attention to whether or not our children are actually learning in reality and how we're holding our staff accountable for that. Our recommendation is that you write that down, make it plain. That's what we mean by operating procedures.
Thank you, A.J. So can I follow up with an illustrative example of what that could look like for us?
Yeah.
So could that be us as a board developing criteria that we would use to identify what kinds of things get put on our board agenda? So if, if, you know, out of 30 items that we may want to put on an agenda, if we had a criteria or set up criteria in place, that we'd say, here's what we're going to consider to prioritize which items, which kinds of things, which issues get onto an agenda?
Yeah. And so other districts that we're working with have done exactly that. That they, they've come up with some type of criteria, what do we as a board think makes the most sense? So to give you a practical example, another board who's adopted this, they recently had a board member, a brand new board member just got elected. And they said, okay, well, I want to have as a board item, you know, I've heard from my constituents who just elected me that they're frustrated with this particular member of district staff who is not the superintendent, not somebody who reports to the board, but you know, someone who works in one of the schools. They say, well, you know, I've heard from my community that they're frustrated with this particular staff person. And I think we need to discuss that at the dais. And the rest of the board said, actually, no, that's, we, we have clear criteria for is this something that we as a board choose to talk about? And, and that doesn't actually meet the criteria. Like if, if community members have a concern with the staff member, that's, that's certainly important. But it's important that that principal will be given the first opportunity to deal with that. That we shouldn't jump over the principal and come straight to the board. But because they had that written down in their policy, it wasn't like the board made that decision kind of as a direct rebuked that individual board member. They just pointed the board member to the operating procedure and says, actually, here's what the operating procedure says. That that's not, that is not the process we choose to use. We've chosen to do it this way so that we can really give principals the first opportunity to deal with issues related to their staff. And then if people are still frustrated, you know, certainly the superintendent can have an opportunity to, you know, deal with their staff. But those steps would take place before anything like that would come to the board. But if the board didn't have that written down, I think it would be, I think that new board member would come in and feel like, you all are saying no because it's me, not because there's a written guidance that we've adopted as a, as a body. But because it's written down, I, I think it helped depersonalize them like, no, this isn't about you. It doesn't matter who came along. If it doesn't meet these criteria that we've adopted in our operating procedures, then we're just not going to put it on our board agenda. And that's true whether it's you or anybody else. And I actually think it helped kind of deescalate what otherwise could have, could have become a pretty dicey situation. So that's one example of how being clear, the board saying, here's what our priorities are from our community. And, and here's how we want to exhibit that we're honoring those priorities in writing that down and making that plain in your operating procedures. How that can really help you as a board function in the way you intend.
Thank you, A.J.
Other, other questions or other things that, you know, might be clear if there's an example or just anything else for clarity's sake that would be helpful?
I think that's it for now.
And so that one example that was asked for and hopefully provided was around board agendas that could be in your operating procedure. That's certainly one area about just all the thoughtfulness about how do we spend our time? Certainly, our encouragement is that boards that want to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes will spend at least 50% of their time each month really focused on are our children learning? Like this is why school systems exist. Our question is, why wouldn't this be what you spend at least half of your time on? Really digging into are our children learning in the areas that are consistent with our community's priorities? And so having operating procedures around how you design and use your time as a board makes sense. Another aspect of that, that, that we've started a draft in response to some of the feedback that you all have offered is a timeline around when do you receive materials? And what's the timeline by which you all have the information you need to be ready to actually do the work that the public has elected you to do? And so that's, that's yet another example of operating procedure that we're recommending. Another one is thoughts about new member onboarding, is what type of supports provided? I remember when I first joined my board, there was essentially no guidance whatsoever provided on how to be effective in my newly elected role. I was really felt kind of abandoned in terms of trying to find my way to being able to serve children in a governance capacity, which I never served on a school board, a public school board before. And so I didn't, I, I didn't know what I was doing. It, it was in my heart to do well, but just because it was in my heart doesn't mean I was actually, I knew how to be effective. And so having some type of operating procedures to think, what are we doing intentionally to really set folks up for success? Preferably before they get elected. But certainly as they get elected and after they've gotten elected. And what, what are we doing to intentionally set folks up for success so that they can more effectively live out the aspirations of their heart to serve children? So that's another example of an area that we're recommending to you based on some of the feedback that you all offered. Thoughts about use of social media, thoughts about use of time and really helping the board be engaged in generative dialogue? Thoughts about information requests from board, how to make sure that you all have access to the information you need for decision making? And then a lot of thoughts about as complaints and concerns come in, like how, how do you handle that? First, how do you handle that for the, if somebody is making a complaint or concern to you as a board member? But then also if you as a board member have concerns about performance, whether of staff or fellow board members, like how do you handle that? And so these are all questions that right now don't feel really powerfully answered by any of your existing policies or operating procedures, but that based on feedback from you all, that we're, we'll be offering a draft, working in partnership with your legal support.
Thank you. The, the issues that you just talked about, are those things that we would, or would you recommend that we put on our agenda for the board retreat coming up in December?
Absolutely. And what we can do, as I said, what we, what we like to do is interview board members individually, see if there's other topics that we haven't been responsive to just because we haven't heard from you. We've gotten some written feedback from board members, but, but we can take the time to hear from folks individually if, if you want to be heard in that way, so that we can make sure that there are any other issues that haven't been surfaced that need to be added to that agenda or that need to, that we need to do some homework on our end first before those sessions come up, that we can do so.
Yes.
A.J., thank you. So given that our board retreat is not scheduled till first week of December, and given that we have already adopted a monitoring calendar, notwithstanding the critical and important work that has to do with our policies and bylaws, how do we hone in on those areas that we're doing sort of right now in real time as we speak, A.J.? I'll give you an example. So at our last board presentation, I think it was goals three and four, Mr. Moskovitz, that were covered in September. That seems like ages ago, right? It was just last month. We got a lot of, we, we got a framing for sort of how to understand the data. But we're also going to be getting data in real time, A.J., because we made the collective effort to adopt, right, our priority areas. What about things like in terms of maximizing our time, right? Using our, our time and energy most effectively? Things like during these board presentations, how do we understand, make best, best use of the time that's spent in presenting to us? So the data, it is what it is. But in actually supporting, inquiring about are we advancing? Are we seeing the progress that we want to see in the data that's being presented to us? So how do we think about that? How do we best prepare? How do we best make use of time when we're asking staff here to present, present sometimes one hour presentations? And then we have one board meeting, sort of to make sense of the information, to ask questions about the information. And, and as importantly, to make sure that we're making improvement progress in those areas that we prioritize. I, I, I'm just worried here, A.J., about the time that it's going to involve, the energy that's going to involve to do bylaws, to write up policies, to have those important discussions, to set some time aside in December. And meanwhile, as you know, the work of our district continues, right, in these areas? So, so any, any advice or words of wisdom with respect to that?
Yeah. This is a common issue that comes up. And the, at the end of the day, it's really going to come down to prioritization. The board, you all will have to make decisions about what you want to prioritize. And we, based on you all declaring what, what you want to prioritize and what you want to deprioritize, you know, we can work with you on, on, on making that happen in your meetings. So I, so I can offer some examples from other districts. These are not recommendations for you all. Some of these things will make sense for you, some of them won't make sense for you. That's for you all to determine. But I just want to offer some examples to try to make what I'm describing more tangible. So examples of things that we've done in other districts that have asked essentially the same questions. We had one district where they actually stopped doing staff presentations at board meetings entirely. They had the superintendent's staff record their presentations via Zoom and provide those to the board. And that, the district I'm thinking of, they provided it to the board in 12 days in advance of the board meeting. So board members have plenty of time to watch the presentations and ask questions of the superintendent before the board meeting ever showed up. What that allowed is for the board to spend a lot more time in generative dialogue at the board meeting because essentially the presentation had happened in advance of the board meeting. It also made it easier from the board members' perspectives, easier on the public because then you could get the ease of watching individual presentations without having to watch the whole board meeting. We had another board that they implemented a process where they received all the materials from the superintendent for board meetings 14 days before the board meeting. And then the board members had five days to submit questions to the superintendent. And the superintendent had several days to put together responses to those questions and then provide that document as part of the agenda items. And so the board members, you know, arrived to the board meeting, having already seen all the question, all the board items. They saw the questions the board members asked, they saw all the responses to those questions. And so it was easier to come and have a deeper conversation because a lot of the kind of basic, easy questions had already been asked and answered in writing in advance of the board meeting. We had another board, they were concerned that board members were just rambling throughout board meetings and essentially, you know, got tired of feeling like their time was being wasted. And so one of the things they did is they gave each board member a set amount of time to speak during each board meeting. And then board members could use as much of that time on whichever board items they wanted. But once they were out of time for the meeting, they were out of time for the meeting. One more example, we had another board that was concerned about how time was used in board meetings. And so they went to a new approach where anytime a new item came up, there was one round of discussion. Each board member got three minutes, you know, to lean into that item, ask questions, things of that nature. And then after each board member had taken their one round or passed, then the board chair would just ask, is there a majority that wants to continue? If there wasn't, then you moved on and the item is closed. And either you move to action, you move on table and move to the next item. But that significantly cut down on board time. And so these are just four examples. Like I said, these are not recommendations for y'all, but just four examples of challenges that other boards faced regarding use of time at board meetings and examples of things that other boards have done to try to be responsive to the situation in their community. Again, whether any of that's relevant to y'all isn't the point, just to say that there's a lot of room for creativity. And so if it's a concern for you all, how do we maximize our use of time? Just know that we've seen a little bit of everything and are happy to help you all be creative about what is the unique way of addressing the situation that makes the most sense for Long Beach.
Doug?
I find myself thinking a lot about how you count these things at meetings. And is this something that we can include in student outcome focused governance work? Or is this just something else? For example, we don't count the public comments, I don't think, that people come to us with. Or maybe our conversations at all, not about those comments. But, but, but if we have comments about, you know, our goals, our guardrails, where we stand on testing, things like that, that seems obvious to me. But are there criteria that have been developed at under other districts that say, okay, this is how we're going to count? This is, these things will count, these things will not count, and to give us a little direction? So I'm not thinking all the time, am I doing this right or am I doing this wrong?
Yeah. This is an important question of if we want to spend 50% of our time on are children actually learning? What conversations reveal whether or not children are actually learning? So some things are pretty obvious. If we have to have a conversation, which at some point you may have to, about whether or not grass is being mowed in the school district? I think most people would accept the idea that whether or not the grass is mowed at being an inch tall or an inch and a quarter tall, whether we're using a John Deere or a Kubota tractor. I think most people would accept that the, we can discuss those issues if the board chooses to. But the whether or not children are learning probably won't hinge on any of those issues. If you disagree, talk to me afterwards, we, we can disabuse you of your notion. But I think most people agree that the whether or not children are learning doesn't hinge on any of those specific topics. So those are, those are pretty kind of bright line. That's not a focus on whether or not children are learning. But then there are some other things that I, I, I think folks would struggle with a little bit more. Well, if we talk about childhood nutrition, does that tell us whether or not children are learning? If we, if we talk about what curriculum we're using, does that tell us whether or not children are learning? To those, we think it's a pretty bright line in this work that know that if we understand whether or not school lunches were effectively deployed in our elementary schools, knowing the answer to that question doesn't tell us whether or not children learned. It does tell us whether or not the school system is creating conditions for children to learn. But that's different than did children actually learn? Like we know everything there is to know about the school lunch program, that doesn't tell us, is little A.J. more literate or numerate tomorrow? And so there are issues that I think are deeply meaningful to the function of a school system. And some issues that are very instrumental in creating the conditions for little A.J. to learn, but that still aren't actually telling us, has little A.J. actually learned? And so then there are issues that we would say are more centerfield for our children learning. And that's really first, what is a goal that we've set? And then what evidence do we have that children are moving in the direction of that goal? And so if we have a goal about social studies, that we want children to know about, you know, American history, then what evidence are we looking at in the middle of the year to know whether or not children have grown in their understanding of American history? If we have a goal that we want children to be able to demonstrate metacognition skills and empathy and, and active listening? Okay, great. Then what, what are we using that tells us in the middle of the school year where the children have grown in metacognition, empathy, or active listening? And when we have conversations about the evidence of have they actually grown? And what did we do that worked and what we do that didn't work? And what are we doing next? Then we're having a conversation about whether or not children are learning and what our response to what that evidence is telling us. And so that is example of something we'd say fits into that 50% of time focused on our children learning, 50% of our time focused on improving student outcomes. And so the way that we help you all do this is we actually have a, we actually have a instrument that either board members can use in some districts, in other districts, the board asks staff to use, but that somebody actually tracks the minutes of the meeting to see which ones meet the criteria that I described of that we're actually monitoring progress relative to our goals for improving student outcomes. That which minutes meet that criteria and which minutes don't meet that criteria? And then are in a position to report back to the board after the meeting, what percentage of that time was focused on student outcomes? Now, our coaching isn't a meeting by meeting coaching. Our coaching is a month by month coaching. So our coaching is that boards that want to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes should spend at least 50% of their minutes each month monitoring progress toward their goals for student outcomes. That's what we mean by being student outcomes focused. And so if you all meet for across three different meetings, but for a total of four hours, then our question is, did you spend at least two of those hours monitoring progress towards your goals for student outcomes? At least two hours looking at evidence that tells us, have our students grown in the area that our community said were most important? And either you have or you haven't. Again, we have a specific instrument for that. And the major decision the board would need to make is do, will board members fill out that instrument each month, which we strongly encourage that each board member does at least once so that you're familiar with it? Or will staff members do it? But, but someone needs to do so and then report back to the board on a monthly basis. What percentage of our time was actually focused in the way that we say we want it to be?
To me, I mean, we haven't seen the criteria that are used, but it seems to me that we could not be talking about goals or guardrails. We could be talking about something else, but it could have something to do with learning. And, and yet I- Uh, and uh, uh, and yet I would, in my simplistic mind, would be sitting there thinking, now, is that uh uh student uh focused uh learning? Or uh, or is that something else that we can't count? Is that more like mowing the grass?
Well, I I think the even harder question is, imagine, let's say, we do not have a goal about um, about underwater basket weaving. But there are some students who did some really amazing underwater basket weaving, and so we talk about it at the board meeting. In the absence of a goal, we would say that that's not part of the fifty percent. So part of that desiring to have a really intense focus on improving student outcomes first requires that you be clear about what are the community's priorities for what students should know and be able to do, what what are your goals? And then to monitor progress relative to the goal. So if you're looking at data about student learning that has nothing to do with the goals you've set, then we'd say that's not part of the fifty percent because it's not a folk, what you all have said needs to be part of the focus. Um, but if it is looking at data that helps inform the board, have students measurably grown in the areas of the goals that you've said, then we'd say, yes, that is time that's focused on student outcomes. But if you're, if you're not looking at data, if at the end of the conversation, you have no deeper insights into whether or not children have actually learned and grown in the area of the goals, then definitively you're, that is not time that we would describe as being student outcomes focused. Uh, it doesn't mean that it's time that's wasted, but it just means that it's time that some of the other stuff that the board chooses to do. And our coaching is choose to prioritize your children's learning. Make that at least half of your time and then all of the other things that the board does in fact have to do, figure out how to do that with the other half of your time. And that's part of the reason for the changes in operating procedures is to help you all be discerning in how you deploy your time so that you can in fact prioritize whether or not children are learning. If you are not intentional about it, it will never happen. I have never, ever come across a district that accidentally had a focus on student outcomes, I've not, I've not had that be the case. Um, either you will intentionally make this a priority or it will not happen. Um, but but there is a, there is an instrument, uh, we we will provide the instrument to you. In fact, I can email it to your staff this evening and you all can look it over and decide whether or not you want to deploy it. Uh, our recommendation is usually that each board member take a, take a month and be responsible for uh using that instrument to track each of your meetings and then adding it all up at the end of the month and then providing that information back to your colleagues. That each board member do that at least once so that you have familiar, familiar familiarity with the tool. Uh, but then whether the board members keep doing it or whether you ask staff to do that, that's uh, that's a decision for later, but then initially you start off by the five of you doing it uh yourselves. Um, if you have student reps, I'd include them in that as well.
Hey Jay, may I ask a question of you just to speak to um in places where you've seen significant increase of time spent around student outcomes in board meetings? What are some of the best practices for informing, teaching, engaging a board um outside of the actual meeting structure? Um, and I say that because I look at just our, our practice time breakdown. Many of the things that are in that time tracker, so to speak, um, are important aspects of the role of the board. Like overseeing the budget development process and knowing a lot about how the community has been engaged in that process, how students have contributed, how staff are interacting around that and how our budget is built. And so when I look at that tractor tracker, hours are spent in the spring with our board. So using that as an example perhaps, um, what are ways that effective boards take that out of maybe the traditional board meeting setting and engage board members?
Yeah, so there, there are a few different pieces of this that have become pretty commonplace. Uh, one, which I suspect you all do, um, uh, you all have a strong reputation, at least in the council, for uh really great uh community engagement work. Uh, so one thing is certainly inviting board members uh to sessions where the administration is already doing um, education about uh budget and priority setting uh with uh key uh uh leaders in the community, whether those are your parent leaders, uh your different schools, education leaders, teacher leaders, things of that nature. As you all are doing your part of engaging um and educating and informing community members. Uh, certainly, uh, inviting board members to that as well. Another thing that's become pretty commonplace is a superintendent uh have uh briefing uh sessions uh for board members. Um, and so that way uh is individual board members or um in your case, maybe two board members at the same time. Uh, um, have a really deep dive um with the superintendent or a team so that you can really uh dig into the questions that that board member has. Uh, having one of those sessions um somewhere uh kind of past the midway point of budget setting has become fairly common. Um, and then one of the important things of that is to, is the staff to make sure you harvest all the questions that were asked. Um, and the answers that were given. And then after you've done those briefings with each of the board members, uh that you then just have a document that says here, uh, here's the result of the briefings with the board members, here are the questions that were asked, here are the answers that were given to all of them. And that's a document that all of them can see so they can have insight into what questions were asked of all the board members. So, so that you have board members who had their, kind of their opportunity to have this really deep dive and to get their questions answered and to understand what it is they're voting on. Um, but uh in a way that's uh a little bit more personalized, but then you still make that transparent uh to their colleagues and to the community uh by having a summary document of the questions that were asked and the answers that were given. Uh, that's, that's a strategy uh the folks have used. Um, another strategy that we recommend is the general, kind of the basics of uh goal, uh, I'm sorry, budget setting, uh to use the example that you asked about, the, the, the basics of that. Having board members um uh take part in uh presenting to and providing education to the community about uh the uh the budgetary process. Um, and the part of it that's owned by the superintendent has distinct from the part of it that's owned by the board. Having board members actually providing that type of training and that type of insight to their community has proven really valuable in helping uh folks clarify which pieces of this process belong to the superintendent. Um, as distinct from which pieces belong to the board. And um, a set of understandings that it's very common for community members not to have, uh because it's not their job, you know, to know all the ins and outs of it. Uh, but it does make sense for the board to, and for the board to be able to communicate that um demonstrates certainly that they have a grasp of it uh themselves. Um, and so those are a few examples of things that other districts have done to try to include uh board members in the process earlier. Um, to make sure that board members are uh have a deep familiarity with and understanding of the process, so much so that they can communicate it to others and make sure that board members have ample opportunity uh to get their uh questions asked and get clarity. Uh, one other thing that I would um clarify around the budget process specifically is a common mistake that we see districts make before they engage in this work is that the superintendent will solicit from the board, uh, what are your priorities for this upcoming budget year? Uh, we find this to be profoundly flawed in that the board's already provided the superintendent with the community's priorities. That's the whole point of uh the goals and guardrails. And so to the extent that there is a new or amended set of priorities every single year means that the original priorities aren't actually the priorities. Um, and so one of the things then that it means for the budgetary process from the superintendent's perspective is that that budget needs to clearly demonstrate of the ways that the superintendent is pouring additional resources into accomplishing the goals while honoring the guardrails. So board members shouldn't have to look or hunt to find this, it should be laid out incredibly uh straightforward. In fact, our coaching is kind of ruthless as it sounds, is that board members, if they don't have clarity around how the superintendent is prioritizing accomplishment of the goals and honoring of the guardrails in the budget, the board members shouldn't vote to approve that budget. And so that, that level of clarity around how is the budget responsive to the community's priorities as communicated by the board and its goals and guardrails is centerfield. When it's understood that the goals and guardrails are the board's priorities that have to show up in the budget. And when the superintendent uh does a really great job of making it very clear and transparent, here's, here are the resources that we applied to the budget last year. And here you can see that we're increasing, you know, our spend on that, you know, by one point three percent in this area, you know, by two percent in that area, um, then it's really obvious how the superintendent is causing the priorities to be the priorities. Then it makes it a whole lot easier for the board to understand the budget, to be able to communicate about it back to his community. Here's, here are the goals that we've adopted based on what you all told us the priorities were. And in the budget, last year, we spent uh one point four million dollars in this area, in this particular strategy that's aligned to goal one. Uh, this year, superintendent is pouring two point one million dollars into that particular strategy. Uh, this strategy really gained us a lot of ground last year, we only spent three million dollars on it, this year we're spending four. Last year, we spent five million on this strategy uh aligned to goal two, and it didn't produce any results. So we're actually going to stop spending money on that, five million is being clawed back and we're going to now apply it to these three strategies um into a goal that we believe will give us more access to goal two. That level of clarity um provided by the superintendent uh helps cut down on um, a lot of the lack of clarity uh that we see in budgeting processes where superintendents are trying to figure out how to be responsive to an entirely different set of priorities every single year. When instead, the superintendent can lean and say, here's what you adopted as the goals. Here's the investment we made last year, here's the investment we're making this year. Um, and here's how we're going to track these, um, and next year's budget. Uh, we'll be able to tell you if these things worked or not, if they did, we're going to spend more money on it next year, and if they didn't, we're going to spend less money on it next year. But just having that year over year consistency of insight into here what the priorities are. It's again, you know, our coaching is to adopt five year, three to five year goals. So if you've got fi- five year goals, then for the next five years, what the priorities are and the alignment of the budget of those priorities should be really straightforward to communicate. And that helps cut down on some of the, the, the huge overhead. Like, if there's a new set of priorities every single year, then it's a lot harder for board members to really be on top of is this budget aligned with the priorities? But if it's the same priorities, who are aligning to the same set of goals over the next five years, then it becomes a lot easier for board members to look and really see the receipts of, yes, I see how we've prioritized these investments because they're aligned to the goals and I could see how we've done that over time.
Thank you.
There's some kind of answer to, and that is, you know, as board members, we have roles in the community uh and, you know, communicating back and forth. Um, I see a lot, a, a lot of stuff coming out now, not in Long Beach, but in other places where they're eliminating uh programs that districts have just started for uh racially, for equity reasons. And the public is not, not happy with that. And uh, the question isn't whether that's good or bad, the question is, can we respond to that at all? Because it's not, doesn't have anything to do with our goals and guardrails, or maybe marginally with one or two at the most. But uh, you know, are, 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 are we, by focusing on what we're talking about right now, abdicating responsibility in what traditionally would be seen as uh roles for school boards?
Yes.
To abdicate that?
No, I mean, there's not much else to say, like, the reality is, you have the amount of time that you have. And you can either spend it getting deeper into our children learning, or you can spend it on whatever else the issue of the day is. And there's always going to be an issue of the day. The, um, and if it's not grass, it's the color of the uniforms, and it's not the color of the uniforms, it's somebody who doesn't like this book or doesn't like that curriculum or um is concerned about um this political issue happening in Washington DC or, or there's always going to be something else that people are concerned with and people have every right to their set of concerns. What you have to decide as a board is will we pivot our priorities? And how we spend our time in board meetings reveals what our priorities are regardless of what we put on paper. Are we going to pivot our priorities or are we not? And if you all collectively think that something, uh, the issue of the day is more important than the priorities that you've adopted from your community, then our coaching is pivot to that. But recognize the cost is that every time you pivot from one set of priorities to another, you undermine the organization's capacity for alignment, meaning that you created a less likely scenario that you accomplished the original set of priorities. So yes, there will always be a new set of priorities. And the traditional view of boards is that they run like firefighters from new thing to new thing to new thing. And you can do that, you're the elected, duly elected representative of the community, if that's what you choose to do, you can. My job as a coach is just to remind you that there is a cost for that. That your cost by being firefighter, uh, political firefighters is that you undermine the organization's ability to accomplish the original set of priorities that you said were priorities. Um, and so if a, the, whatever the issue of the day is so important to you all that you are willing to endure the cost to the organization of being able to accomplish it, then you should pursue that. But if you think, and you know what, even if, you know, if we deal with this issue, it's not nearly as important as the priorities that we've already adopted, then yes, our coaching is to do exactly as you say, is to actively choose not to play political firefighter for every single issue just because it comes up, because there will never be an end to that. Three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year, as public officials, somebody's knocking on our door with a concern. And whether, and we have a choice as to whether or not we make that a priority for the school board. Now, saying something is not something that you choose to prioritize for the school board, doesn't mean it gets ignored. We're just talking about what happens in a board meeting, there's about a dozen other ways things can be attended to other than it taking up time on a board meeting. And so to suggest that you focus on your priorities in a board meeting doesn't suggest that you ignore everything else, but it does suggest that not, you don't choose to have every single thing that comes up dominate time on a board meeting. But that is a choice for you all as the elected representatives to make. Um, and our position is, you know, especially as, you know, former elected officials ourselves as coaches, our position is that we trust the wisdom of the elected officials, we trust the community's representatives to make that call. So if you, if the issue of, if somebody is concerned about uh whether or not the grass has been mowed properly at the elementary school and you all want to spend three hours on that during a board meeting, um, but you have thought through, yes, our, we're struggling in the area of literacy. But it's a high enough priority for our community that we should stop talk about whether or not the grass is mowed, even though that will cost a, in that what we will not do instead of that uh is we won't spend as much time talking about can little AJ actually read and is our reading intervention strategy working? What evidence do we have in the data to suggest that? Um, as long as you are willing to make that trade off, then we'd say that's that is the decision that the elected representatives choose and, and we'd stand behind you as you make it. Uh, but that is the thoughtfulness we'd want you to engage in, is, is this worth the cost to organizational alignment around our community's priorities? And if so, then pay the cost, but if not, then endure the the hardship of being politically unpopular on behalf of the children you serve.
Uh, being reelected, I'm worried about being sworn in, it's been six months since I was elected and it'll be another three months before I get sworn in, so that's not my concern. My concern is uh that that I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think there's more to it than that. And the question isn't whether there's more, the question is how to handle it. And you don't, what you're saying is you don't have to handle it at a school board meeting.
At a board meeting, right. Yeah, then, and that's exactly the point, is there are plenty of ways to handle it. The decision you are making isn't, is this something that is important to consider? The only decision we're discussing right now is, is it so important that it should override the other priorities you have for board meetings? That's the only conversation we're having now, not, is this important or not? If somebody's concerned about the grass, I, I'm not asserting that that's not important. I'm just saying you all have to make the decision, is that more important to deal with at a board meeting than the other things that we want to deal with at a board meeting? And if the answer is yes, then do so, if the answer is no, then you just got to figure out, okay, then how will this be handled? And I suspect your very capable superintendent will help you sort that out.
AJ, I think um, just to build on, on uh Mistrato's uh observations, I think the other thing that it does um, if, if we maintain and stay the course around the original priorities, right, our four board goals uh and additional guardrails, is it also provides cover for our most cu- uh vulnerable communities? Uh, because if anyone is watching, uh, in, in this case, we have millions uh watching our school board meeting, and they see that, hey, when fifteen people show up to a board meeting, they're able to get the board to pivot away from the original priorities, then it becomes a precedent, I think, that makes our communities vulnerable that, well, the next time, let's get thirty people and then we'll pivot in another direction. And at the next board meeting, let's get forty people to show up, and the board may pivot that way. And, and so I, I do think, um, if we're clear that, hey, it's not that- additional issues and concerns and challenges aren't important, but those don't necessarily need to be part of a board meeting, right? And and I think that's where it's important for communities to also understand, all things do not ride on two hours, right, during a board meeting. But we need to be clear about that with our communities as well, uh because if our communities have historically seen that the board meeting, public comment, is how you get the board to pivot, um then I I think that's a vulnerable place for us to be in.
Yeah, it's certainly not my place to tell you all what your values should be. Um, but if I, as I've visited with you all individually and collectively, I've heard people speak to this idea of this value of equity, this idea that we are going to make sure that we are always uh attending to the needs of our most vulnerable uh students and families. What I can tell you definitively from our work all across the country is that that notion of attending to the needs of our most vulnerable uh students and families is permanently at odds with who has the most access to board members. Uh, because often it's the case that uh our most vulnerable families have the least access to the board and to board meetings and to board members. Um, and our less vulnerable uh families and stu- uh families of students uh often have greater access. And so if a board allows the entirety of its agenda to pivot based on who has access to me as a board member, well, these five people called me, and so we've got to focus on this. Well, what about the five hundred families that don't have the same access to you? Uh, what, what brings their issues to the fore? Uh, and so if the board's uh rubric for, this is important for us to focus on, is who has the most access to board members, then you permanently have made the statement that this idea of equity actually is not relevant to you. Um, and that political prowess is what is most influential to you. That is distinct from what I've heard you all say, uh but as you've probably heard me suggest before, I'm less convinced by what you say and much more convinced by what you do. And so if your agendas as a board, instead of being dominated by, here's how we are tending to the needs of our most vulnerable students, instead are dominated by, here is who is expressing the loudest voice, which is very rarely our most vulnerable students, uh then that lets me know that you talk about equity, but you ain't walking about equity.
You know, um, I think unless there's any objection, we're going to leave it on that note. Um, thank you so much for your time. Uh, we look forward to working with you in the future. I uh want to express gratitude on behalf of the board for helping us to refocus our efforts and and center ourselves a- again on the work that we're doing. So um, we know that you have a busy schedule. We also have more meetings this afternoon. Enjoy your dinner. Thank you for being with us.
Madam Chair, just for, just for clarity, before you leave us, AJ, I just want to get confirmation on what the concrete next steps are. I heard three things. Uh, one is that AJ will do some follow-up for individual interviews with our individual board members. Um, I also heard that you were going to share you and Wayne and/or the team some recommendations. And then we do have an upcoming board retreat scheduled, where we'll continue that work. Is that, can you affirm that for us, AJ?
Yes, uh, all three of those things are accurate. Wayne has been uh wonderful to collaborate with on this. He's provided me a lot of the feedback from you all, and then he and I have been working collaboratively to try to be responsive uh to the concerns that you all have. And so that we'll be able to um have a rough draft uh for your consideration that you all then can take and modify from there in whatever ways you all need to.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you. Okay. And you as well. Thank you. Um, this part, well, this meeting is adjourned and we will.
President Craighead, if you could just, for the record, take a roll call. I think we just missed that in the beginning.
I did miss that in the, in the beginning. Um, so before we adjourn, we will have our board secretary take a roll call um just to establish which members are present today.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
I'm here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Otto?
Here for the whole meeting.
Thank you. Member Miller is absent. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that reminder. So uh, that concludes this meeting. We will reconvene in public at five o'clock this evening. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about the little delay. Um, we uh, thank you for being here, for those in person, and also for those watching us live streaming. I will now ask our board secretary to establish a quorum and take a roll.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Arroyo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I will ask our student representative, Connor Suarez, to lead us in the pledge.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, for those of you present in the room, the board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms here with our board secretary that uh you can fill out indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board discussed item three point one, but took no reportable action. And now we are at ad- adoption of the agenda. And I just have a note that we will be pulling item fourteen point four.
I move to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I'll have our board secretary take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto? President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes four zero. I mean, five zero, sorry.
Thank you. And at this time, we are going to introduce our student representative from Browning, Mr. Connor Suarez. Connor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Connor Suarez, and I'm a tenth grader at Browning High School. I'm here to talk to you today about what's been going on at Browning since last year and this year, starting this year. First, I would like to say that last year, twenty-six seniors graduated with their associate's degree for the first time in Browning's history. I would like to thank Superintendent Baker, Dr. Oment, and Lupe Pacias from LBCC for helping us take this trip along the past four years. Me personally, I am one-third of the way to getting my associate's degree. I'm twenty out of sixty credits, and I think that it's really amazing that we get to do this. Last year, the seniors left, but that also brought the biggest freshman class to our school. This is because we at Browning love our school spirit. We did choice fair last year, went very well. We did site night, also went very well, and a lot of other things that led to this amazing success this year. Um, the freshmen that are here this year, uh, the LBCC classes that they're taking are going very well, I would assume. They are taking three LBCC classes for college studies and uh future for their jobs. And I think that is really excellent, because I was taking the same classes last year. Um, I would also like to say that our journey in hospitality and culinary has been going very well. So far, over the seven years that we've been here, in the C cap culinary competition, our students have won four hundred thousand dollars of scholarships to different schools around the US. I feel like this just really shows that we have something with us. It's very important to me, because I personally want to go into culinary. And I think that our students are really amazing at what they do. Thank you.
Well, that sounds fabulous. I'm very happy to hear that you're interested in the culinary arts. Um, we're very interested in sampling some of your curriculum. No, it's wonderful to have you here uh this evening. Is there anyone here that um you would like to acknowledge as as being supportive from your school or otherwise?
Uh, Mr. Miyaki, my supervisor and counselor. Uh, he really helped me over last year and this year, just getting me into all of the programs that I can do and everything that can help our school and even outside of our school. Uh, my dad and my mom, they've really helped me with my work, so.
Fabulous, fabulous. And did you mention that you're a sophomore this year?
Yes, tenth grade.
You're a sophomore, and you are already a third of the way through your credits for an associate's and arts degree? Is that also what you said?
Um, at the end of this year.
At the end, oh, okay, at the end of this year. Still.
Yes.
Amazing. Um, Dr. Benitez, you are patiently waiting.
Thank you, President Craighead. So Connor?
Yep.
Um, thank you for sharing all the wonderful uh things going on with you and at Browning. Let's say I'm an eighth grader watching from home right now with my caregivers and family, and I'm thinking, hmm, the school of choice high school fair is coming up. What would you tell an eighth grader right now about why they would, why they should consider Browning?
Well, on the twenty-sixth, isn't that choice fair happening? Um, on the twenty-sixth, we're going to be there, and I think that our school is really amazing, because I really like it because it's small. You get to know everybody there. I talk to people from ninth grade to twelfth grade. I know basically everybody there. It's just, we have a big community, and everybody knows each other. Everybody is together.
Well, thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear. We are going to take a a little pause to to have a picture, so we invite you up. And happy to meet you. Okay, usually I say, um, you're welcome to join us the rest of the evening, but um, your dad has to stay here because he's working.
And he's got homework.
And he's, and he's got homework. So Connor, you have to go, and we will keep your dad.
But he might be bringing something really good tonight after the meeting to eat.
Practice. Yeah. Yeah, that would be wonderful homework.
No pressure, Dana.
Yeah. Yeah, no pressure. Um, let's see, where did I put my agenda? Okay, so um, before we have our uh video celebration, I believe our student board member has an acknowledgement.
Um, this month, the district will be selling, celebrating disability history and awareness month in October. So there's a short pledge that I will be reading for that. LBUSD strongly believes in the importance of all students, with and without disabilities, deepening their understanding about disability history and strengthening their cultural competence, understanding and acceptance of the people, of people with disabilities, and the important contributions people with disabilities had and continue to have in our society. Disability History Month allows all students to know where they've been and the endless possibilities of where they can go while developing a sense of pride in themselves and their disabilities, and become more civically engaged in their communities.
Thank you, Alana. And now I will direct your attention to the screens for our vision and action.
Hi, I'm Lizeth, and I'm a peer interpreter at Wilson High School. Peer interpreter program is a program for students and by students. We um are pretty much students at Wilson who help out in classrooms that are in need of a little bit more help with English.
Hi, I'm Sochi, and I'm part of the peer interpreter program at Wilson High School. To me, the peer interpreter program is like students getting the opportunity to help other students get a better understanding of English and understand the terms that the teacher is requiring for like the assignments. Since like, a lot of teachers here don't really speak Spanish, so I feel like having a student help them out really makes them feel more comfortable to start actually doing their work and get just a better understanding of like class in Wilson High School, honestly.
Remember the first time I helped a student in the classroom, it felt nice being able to help someone in your own language.
I was actually one of these students in elementary. I didn't have like nobody to help me. And I feel like now that I get the opportunity to help, it just makes me feel really happy that kids actually get the opportunity that I didn't have as a child.
Our interpreters actually collect data to determine where the need is greater, so that way we can target the classrooms with the goal of being reclassified. This helps as a criteria to speed up the process of reclassification.
Every student deserves an opportunity to be able to learn English, like at whatever age, honestly, it's just important. That way they could communicate with honestly anyone. And I feel like it's a really good program to have at schools. That way they actually feel like they're learning something in school.
Well, it's always nice to hear about the good things that are happening um across the district. Uh, I also want to acknowledge National Principals Month, and we will have um more of an acknowledgement later on in the agenda, but I just thought I'd mention that now while we were having recognitions and acknowledgements. And next on the agenda, we have um a public hearing. So this is the time, uh, this is the time set aside for public hearing regarding sufficiency of K-12 textbooks and instructional materials. I think I'll take them one at a time. So um, I will now declare, declare the hearing open. Was there anyone who wished to speak on this item?
I don't think we have any speakers.
Okay. If none, then I declare the hearing for the sufficiency of K-12 textbooks and instructional materials closed. And I will go next to declaring the hearing open for approving all environmental documents, approving the Washington Middle School Transformation Project, and authorizing staff to file the notice of uh determination. And is there anyone who would like to speak to this item?
I don't have any speakers either.
Okay, seeing that we have um no one to speak on that item as well, then I declare the hearing uh closed. And next, we go to public testimony on items listed on the agenda. I'm checking, I see. Um, let's see. Let's see. We have a new, we have a new form and I'm trying to get used to it. Oh, yes. So we have two, two people who'd like to speak on items listed on the agenda. I'll just remind you that it's a three-minute limit. And to please limit your comments to the chair and not to individual members of the board or staff. So first up, we have Shannon McCabe.
I'm Shannon McCabe. I'm a parent of a student with disabilities. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, is a federal law that mandates students are entitled to a free, appropriate, public education. The students are placed in the least restrictive environment and receive an individual education program. As you will hear in the CAC recommendations to the board, there's been a history of suggestions relating to IDEA, especially regarding the IEP. Compliance with IEP makes legal sense, but compliance alone is failing our students with disabilities. In the article Beyond Special Ed Compliance, the author states, "We need to broaden our ideas of inclusive and culturally responsive education to make sure that disability culture is part of the vision and the movement for special education reform." The link between racial justice and disability justice cannot be overlooked. While mandates are logical directives, my daughter will never thrive in a system grounded in this analysis. IEPs are multi-page deficit-based directives that will never foster disability culture, community history, or representation. I'm here to share another idea. This acronym represents inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. It is a subcommittee of the Fremont Elementary PTA. But it is also an annual celebration at the school where my daughter is now a fifth grader. Yesterday, Fremont held its annual Idea Day. The theme was inspired by Naomi Murakawa. She said, "Why be a star when you can make a constellation?" At a school-wide assembly, the students read "We Move Together." They discussed the themes in the book and created an individual star art project that will turn into class constellations and photos. Though a single day doesn't cultivate belonging, my daughter just returned from an exciting trip to Camp High Hill. We suspect she is the first person with Down syndrome to go to Camp High Hill overnight. This would not have been possible for her if I had consented to compliance offers that the district had presented at her initial, her triennial, and her annual IEPs. That's right, I have never fully consented to a FAP offer, to an offer of LRE, or to an IEP because her disability isn't measured by her defects. By contrast, I see her as a trustworthy and respectful human being. I envision by 2035, a future-ready adult and an equity and inclusion leader. What do you want her graduate portrait to look like?
I'm, I'm sorry your time is up, but I do have a clarifying question. Can you repeat again what the acronym stands for, please?
Which one?
The IDEA? Right, IDEA.
It's the Fremont IDEA?
Yes.
It, it stands for inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. I think I gave stickers for everyone from the day yesterday and it'll also be the running theme for the Jogathon shirts this year. And if, I know I'm over time, but I do, Zoe is the first person with Down syndrome to promote from Fremont and the school has been operating for 120 years. It's its 100th and 20-year anniversary.
Wow. Well, you, we, we wish your daughter well. Thank you for sharing all that positive news with us.
Sure. I'll email you the rest. Thank you.
So our, our next speaker for items on the agenda, Sova Khanna. I, you may need to help me with the pronunciation. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Good, good, good. My name is Sowashanapu. And I'm the father of my son Somnia. He's a child who migrated from Cambodia with special needs. Six years ago, we have a dream of bringing our son to have education here. We struggled with him to begin busy. So after six years of having education, he still struggled learning English. Every year, we wrote a letter to the principal to make sure that his English, he passes English learner proficiency. We request IEP amendment to the school principal and he keep on failing. And they set up goal for him, SMART goal. And this year, once again, we request it again. And he's still failing. In fact, this year, he moved to seventh grade now. His test result is even behind his sixth grade level, his fifth grade. So we request the same thing. So we have an IEP again. So the IEP this year was incomplete. The form haven't even filled up yet. So we, we just wondering why and special ed, you know, Marani and Dr. Melissa and Dr. Cony even sent us some Mrs. Jingi to help. And the school tried to help us as well. But still, what we're lacking is, I don't want my son to feel under the crack. So we request to help and definitely, I don't want him to classify as a long-term English learner. After six years, there's so much need to be done. He cannot get below standard after six years. So I wish that the SMART goal need to be redefined and my son cannot be fall behind the crack. For example, the school need to have some continuity in teaching my child. The school team seem to lack of teamwork, you know, they, they have six people on the team. Only three people show up at the IEP meeting to do, only one team, one person who really know my son. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. And now we have a few people who'd like to speak on items not listed on the agenda and we will start with Robin Chen.
Hi, guys. I'm here for the CAC party too, but my name is Robin Chen and I'm here to talk about co-teaching. Mostly I'm here to say thank you and to share the impact that this support model has had on my family in particular. Co-teaching is allowing for more students to be educated together. Kids that would have been otherwise educated in a self-contained class and a nondescript bungalow at the far end of campus, you know, are now sitting in classrooms with their peers, typical and not. So I don't know where folks think that students with disabilities go after school. They think they drive on special ed roads and live in special ed homes and shop at the special ed Target. But there's only one world and co-teaching is righting a wrong that we have been committing against our students for decades. Co-teaching is showing these kids that they belong not only in this general ed classroom, but on this campus and in this community. So, you know, even if you do it badly, it's still going to be better than what was because the old RSP model of support just doesn't work. Co-teaching, when done well, is two skilled teachers working in positive partnership to support all students in the classroom, two teachers, both alike in dignity. I know some content specialists are worried. They don't think they're qualified to teach our kids. As if my kid's disability means he can only be taught by a magical wizard or an elite Navy SEAL. There's a difference between actually being unqualified and just being uncomfortable and one of those things is a closed door. So I know it's not perfect. It looks different at each school and it really matters a whole lot, you know, if the admin team really believes in inclusive practices. You're really lucky if you have a Rochelle Martin at your site or if your principal is Pilar Perosio. Beyond lucky. But, you know, we are at the precipice of something really good. And so board members, I'm not addressing you, I'm only addressing Ms. Craighead, but I do, I do ask you to keep going to your school sites and ask your principals how co-teaching is going. And if there's a hint of resistance, I challenge you to ask them to explain to you why they think continued segregation of students is a good thing. And then make them give you an example of a time in history when segregation of any kind turned out to be the right thing to do.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy, my name is Nancy Hayes and I am the mother of a student at Poly High School. Long Beach Poly High School is undergoing much-needed renovations. One of the main consequences of these renovations is the baseball field will be paved over to place modular classrooms. Thus, the baseball team is forced off its home field for at least one year. We parents and the new coaches waited patiently for months to receive information about the replacement arrangements. I sent two emails to the board member for Poly's district, the CFO, and the superintendent, Dr. Baker. Dr. Baker responded a few weeks ago and since then, we have finally seen some action. Thank you, Dr. Baker. I am presenting to the entire board the photos of the field where the baseball team is supposed to practice and play games at Cabrillo. You will notice the poor condition of the field, the abundant gopher holes, the uneven turf, the lack of pegs for bases, no dugouts, no potable water. All these add up to unsafe conditions. Additionally, the project leaders lacked an understanding of baseball being a year-round sport and a year-round class for the teams. CIF-eligible games begin on February 17th. The Cabrillo field, even under expedited repairs, will not be ready for practice until at least early December, possibly even January. This means two to three months of scrambling for a safe place to practice and probably canceling most practices. My son and many other kids on the team have endured multiple disruptions to their schooling and not just from the pandemic. In fourth grade, he was removed for repairs from Longfellow to another elementary school, which was not welcoming. In middle school, he was sent to Hughes North, which was poorly planned, starting with his woodshop class in which there was no machinery, no wood, and no instruction. And now he has a class in baseball with no field, no mound, no cages, and no water. According to the educational, the California Department of Education's PK-312 Educational Facilities Master Plan Evaluation Guide, Section 5.0, the following are part of the evaluation process for educational master plans. There is a short-term and long-term plan for each school. There is a schedule for the short-term and long-term improvements needed for each school. There is a budget estimate for the short-term and long-term improvements for plan for each school. The schoolyards, playgrounds, athletic fields, recreational assets, and green space at each school are an integral part of the planning for each school. I do not see where these have been followed, at least for baseball. I am asking for the leasing of a temporary baseball field during the Cabrillo repairs to accommodate our faithful players. Anything less is disrespectful to the players and Poly's motto is a producer of scholars and champions. The legacy of baseball at Poly is as storied as football and deserves nothing less. Since 1916, almost 20 Poly graduates have played in the MLB, with many more being drafted into the minors. These kids have used up all their resiliency just to get to this point. These kids deserve empathy and kindness. I respectfully submit this statement and these pictures for the record of the school board meeting and I respectfully request an expedited review of temporary alternatives to Cabrillo's field so these students do not lose important training, conditioning, and bonding as teammates. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have John Briscoe. I'm going to ask you to direct your comments to me and not to any.
Madam President, who's the superintendent? I'd like him to pass out my material to the board.
If you would like some.
I'll walk up there and hand to you if you'd like me to, but that's not common.
I don't think that's going to be necessary. What I would like you to do is make them available for our board secretary. Our board secretary will make sure that each board member and the superintendent, if you'd like, receives the materials.
I have a business card for each individual down the side and I have a second card for every member on the board sitting at the front. If you would please, Superintendent, have your secretary distribute those accordingly. Thank you. So I'm John Briscoe, your family man. Es uno de nosotros. Your congressional candidate for California 42. I'm running for the United States Congress. I'm here tonight to introduce myself, John Briscoe. Vote for your family man for U.S. Congress. I'm also familiar with Long Beach and Long Beach schools. I went to school in Long Beach, Jefferson Junior High at that time, Wilson High School, Cal State Long Beach, not part of your jurisdiction. My business is in Long Beach. My office is on the corner of Fourth and Atlantic. I own rental properties and I own, I don't know, my employees are all from Long Beach as well. Long Beach, my mom and dad were both, were both residents here until they recently died. Long Beach is home. Long Beach is dear and cherished. And Long Beach Unified School District is a very big, important concern of mine. After three years of effort, I forced the Long Beach Fire Department to go out and do their statutory minimum duty and inspect the public school sites for health, safety, and fire. They did that about six years ago. And it was, oh, several thousand hours on their part to go do the inspections they hadn't done for several decades. And the result of that was the inspection reports and I wouldn't send my kids, my dog to some of the schools. I want to draw your attention to the unsafe, unsanitary, and illegal occupancy usage in the locker rooms in your middle schools. They're overcrowded. Your principals don't know what the occupancy usage is and they assign students like an accordion because they don't care what the occupancy is on those classrooms and those classes. So I will be working to force the Long Beach Fire Department to make themselves, make their way out to all of your middle schools to do an inspection, citation, and enforcement. What I will ask them to do is tell you to put an occupant load sign up in each of those locker rooms because there's none now. Nobody knows. The coach, the teachers, the students have no idea what that locker room is supposed to hold. And I can tell you, Poly High School, for example, with a top-ranked football team and six-period team sport, is, is their locker room, if you're lucky, holds maybe 90, 95, 84, 103, or 110. And with 300 boys on the football team or 200, it's clearly grossly overcrowded, illegal, unsanitary, and unsafe. So I will be coming back to your superintendent, and I still don't know who the superintendent is. I don't know why it's such a mystery. Who's the superintendent? I can't see.
The website everywhere.
Oh, not here? Anyway, oh, look it up. That's great. So whoever you are, Mr. Superintendent or Mrs. Superintendent, I don't know. It's, it's a mystery. So. That's fine. I'm, I'm asking you to please do your job and create safe usage, safe spaces for our students in Long Beach Unified in the locker rooms in the middle schools. So I'm here for the students. I'm a 16-year elected school board trustee, by the way, so I know something about your business up there at the diocese, not nearly on so large and grand a scale. John Briscoe for U.S. Congress. I'll spend the same time in Congress looking into safety and sanitation for the students as I do in the Long Beach Unified. Thank you. John Briscoe, U.S. Congress.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have reports on superintendent advisory groups. Don't know if we have reports, but I'll go down the list just the same. The Business Budget and Policy Development Group. Dr. Benitez.
Yes, Madam President, just one draft board policy that will be coming to us at our next board meeting, Board Policy 514153. And this is pertaining to suicide prevention specifically for our K through six grades. So in our packets for our next meeting, we will have that for consideration.
Thank you. Next, instruction and student learning supports. Ms. Lopez.
Yes, we spoke about the Williams textbook requirement. And schools are now required to provide all students with equal access to instructional materials, safe schools, and quality And schools are now required to provide all students with equal access to instructional materials, safe schools, and quality teachers. And according to the Ed Code 60119, sufficient textbooks or instructional materials means that each student must have standard-aligned instructional materials, which may be in a digital format to use in class and to take home. LACO, or the Los Angeles County Office of Education, or LACO, monitors instructional materials and certifies school districts in the county through scheduled and unscheduled site visits. In addition, the county office monitors quarterly reports addressing any complaints related to materials, facilities, and teacher vacancies and misassignments. So we definitely had visits, and we like to send a special thanks to our schoolsite coordinators, LACO's visiting team supervised by Frank Jimenez, our textbook supervise, I'm sorry, super, services supervisor, Richard Lucio, and OCIPD's William Liaison, Leo Ramos, who coordinated the visits and supported sites as needed.
Thank you. Mr. Miller is not here this evening, so we won't have a report on workforce development. Mr. Otto with Student Outcome-Focused Governance.
Yeah, and there's no subsequent report to my report at the last meeting where we talked about the workshop that we had just had. We're continuing to work on this. We had a presentation earlier about our student-focused, student outcomes-focused governance process, and it was helpful, and we're looking forward to our next meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent calendar, and I will just remind everyone that item number 14.4 has been pulled from the consent calendar. We need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. Item number 46, the contract with CW Driver, Inc., to increase the contract by $7,853,700, from $86,327,289 to a maximum of $96,240,358. And so this is to provide lease-back construction services. And so, Mr. Miranda, can you explain this contract and the need for the increase, please?
Yes, absolutely. So we contracted with CW Driver roughly one year ago for three total phases of construction over at Jordan High School. So we call those phases Phase 5A, 5B, and Phase 6. At this particular point, we're pushing forward on Phase 5A only, which is major stadium renovations and a major stadium overhaul. So this is a new all-weather track and field, demolition and reconstruction of their bleachers, grandstand, press box, and so on and so forth, new lighting, new concession stands, new team room, just a host of large-scale activities. I speak to that particular phase right now because that particular phase is where we have received subcontractor bids at this point. So whereas at that point in time last year, we estimated based on expertise and cost estimates from our contractor and architect and industry partners what that cost would be, and we continue to see cost escalation. So we've seen cost escalation, believe it or not, even from one year to the next. The subcontractor community is just a tough labor market. There's a lot of other competing parties and interests fighting for the same labor force out there for these projects, which only increases our cost as well. There's also quite a bit of unforeseen conditions on this project we've encountered. And we have that from time to time on these older school sites, of course. So as we remedy those unforeseen sign conditions, that also contributes to the cost increase. There are additional phases to come, right? So I didn't speak at length to Phase 5B and 6, but at that point when we bid to subcontractors for those particular phases, which is primarily the demolition and reconstruction of the gymnasium and aquatic center buildings, I may find myself right in front of the board again just to present our current findings and cost figures for those particular phases.
Do you have--
I do have another question, and not for Mr. Miranda.
Thank you.
Is this on item, thank you, Mr. Miranda. 49 and 50, there are two reimbursements, one for $229,748, and the other one for $229,734. And so I'm just, if you can explain those reimbursements, which is good, the money's coming back, but was this in, you know, overcharged, or what is this?
Thank you. Actually, Coatsen is a foundation that was created by the founders of Neutrogena to invest back into the education field. So it provides selected school sites a two-year grant and pays for a mentor teacher who provides coaching and additional professional development to the teaching staff.
So these are grants, not reimbursements, or reimbursements, I mean, in the form of grant?
Yes, it reimburses the salary for an individual.
Dr. Benitez?
I'm sorry, were you done, Ms. Lopez?
Okay, one more question. On items 55 through 61, we're being asked to authorize district spending ranging from $150,000 to $500,000. But we're being asked to approve a five-year versus a yearly allowing the authorization of the spending. Can I ask what the rationale is for the five years versus the one year? And these are on items 55 through 61.
Yes, this is just allowing us to use, piggyback off of bids that are, that have been awarded in various public entities. This allows us to just piggyback off of those bids for the goods and services that are listed here in these items.
Right, I understood that part, but I'm asking, so it is, the range is from the $150,000 to $500,000, but can I ask the rationale for the five-year versus the one-year?
So this is just in terms of the expectation of spending? The estimate of spending is based on either a five-year or one-year period?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to highlight item 14.7, When We Take Action. This is a resolution supporting National Principals Month. So thank you to our principals.
Yes, and once we take the vote, we are going to have our student board member read that for us.
Great.
I have a typo to mention on the, on item 14.9, student member of the Board of Education under, where it says "role and responsibilities of student board members," it currently says "a student board shall not be considered," but it should say "a student board member." And so that was just a little typo. I want to bring that to everybody's attention.
I missed one more item, Madam Chair. Mr. Miranda, sorry, I, we had you up here. Item 14.10. So this is our highly anticipated Washington Middle School project. So, Mr. Miranda, I know that in the past, when you've presented about this project, updates about this project, a big component of this project is around the Washington neighborhood community. This is a long-term project, and, you know, quite frankly, we've spoken about the importance that Washington Middle School has provided for a community that oftentimes doesn't get a lot of the love that it deserves, right? Whether it's meeting space, whether it's after-school activities, whether it's parent involvement, just the hub of important role that Washington Middle School plays. So just for our communities, Mr. Miranda, could you talk about what we're doing, what we're going to continue to do for that community that will sorely miss that school site? And of course, all in good, right? It's going to be better, bigger, modernized. But just what we're doing, what conversations we're having around how to best support, you know, that vacuum that will be left there with Washington Middle School.
Sure, and I'll start with that good you just started describing there as well, because that's in part this board action, right? So this board action, just like with many of our projects, we have to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. CEQA, and I've described this recently, right, where often it takes us down a different path based on project complexity, project details, certain parameters as defined by our professional services consultants. For this particular action, an initial study helped us kind of steer down this path that really necessitated a deeper analysis via an EIR, an environmental impact report, where we look at a host of different activities. So that particular report set forth mitigation measures that are now in place. Those mitigation measures are highlighted as an attachment to the board resolution as well. But really, the EIR in and of itself, and the board action, and the entirety of this resolution speaks to the project details, right, which at the end of the day is a full demolition of the campus. It's a large-scale project, which of course necessitates it taking some time. When all said and done, we're going to have a newly transformed campus for Washington Middle School and the community out there as well. So we've continued to communicate and collaborate with both the school community and the community at large. We've really been partners, I say through the entirety of this process, from the inception of this project design to where we are today, partnering on things like, you know, safe route to school, safe passage to school, to the interim facility over at Butler, where they're currently starting the school year, right? A lot of ongoing dialogue with the Washington Neighborhood Association just with respect to seeking feedback on the project specifics and details. But in particular, where you described, where would those spaces be in the interim for folks to gather and meet, play? Because that particular school site's going to be under renovation and construction for such a long stretch. What we've communicated and conveyed is Butler in and of itself will help in a major way, right? Butler is at a central location. It's where Washington, it's Washington's current hub, of course. And Butler has substantial facilities for play space, for green space, also for meeting space. So we're looking to maximize that particular location first. We're also partnering and communicating with our use of facilities department and other folks just to identify, is there additional need that we can accommodate elsewhere? So those conversations will continue, right? Those are not going to start and stop when construction begins. This is a multi-year effort, so we'll continue down that path and continue to communicate and collaborate with all interested parties out there in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda.
I appreciate you bringing up that point because the Washington community is not, is not just about the students. It's not just about those schoolkids. The community relies on that school as a hub, so I appreciate you bringing up that point. Let's see, any, if there's no further discussion, then I'll ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 4-0.
Thank you. And then before we go on, I will ask Alana, our student board member, to read the resolution acknowledging National Principals Month.
Supporting National Principals Month. Whereas, October 2024 is National Principals Month, as celebrated by the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And whereas, school principals embody elements of our Vision 2035 adult portrait, working daily to support each student's journey toward realizing their potential by being champions for students, equity-focused change agents, positive and resilient professionals, adaptable and reflective lifelong learners, empathetic communicators, empowering facilitators of learning, creative and critical thinkers, and community-minded and collaborative leaders. And whereas, the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal serve as mobilizing forces behind any school improvement effort. And whereas, school principals interact daily with students and cultivate positive working relationships with parents, as well as certificated and classified staff. And whereas, school principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas, school principals are multipliers of good teaching, key to teacher retention, and second, only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors affecting what students learn at school. And whereas, the Long Beach Unified School District is recognized as one of the world's leading school systems, thanks in large, in large part to school principals who work tirelessly and continue, contribute immensely to high-quality learning environments for students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District hereby acknowledges October 2024 as National Principals Month and urges everyone to express their deep gratitude to school principals for their vital contributions to thousands of students. A witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hands on this day, 16th, on the 16th day of October 2024.
Thank you for reading that, Alana. Okay, we are now at item 15, Staff Report, and so, let's see, that is the board meeting remote access from Avalon. Did we have someone who was going to speak on this? Oh.
Yes, President Craighead, I could speak to the memo and also provide the board an update related to what we've done over the course of the last few months, and also in response to really some board direction provided last year and discussions, requests from the, from public comments related to the, or explaining the difficulty that our residents on Catalina Island have in being able to provide access to the board meetings and public comments. And so this is just an update. Of course, during the time period of the pandemic, we certainly got more flexible with providing opportunities to be able to participate remotely, both from the legislative body as well as the public, and really being able to provide that flexibility, first through executive order and then through legislative action, to provide greater access under the Brown Act. I have to commend the Long Beach Unified School District because since 2019, you folks have been live-streaming your meetings even before then, providing that access greater than just those that can be physically present here in the building. And since 2020, the board has also posted those meetings in multiple languages so that the public can, has direct access to the business that this board conducts during this time period, which is a great way and meets the, really, the underpinnings of the Brown Act in terms of being able to provide public access to the people's business. A quick note on the Brown Act itself provides opportunities for remote meetings or telephonic meetings, but it's really access for the board members, or the members of the legislative body can participate in those meetings electronically or telephonically. In order to do so, there are certain requirements that need to be met under the Brown Act regarding that participation, somewhat, sometimes a little bit complex requirements. But that's not really what we're talking about here, because the Brown Act, as part of its underpinnings, really is intent, its intent is to set the minimum standard for public participation in the meetings. In fact, the Brown Act itself has a section embedded within the telephonic requirements as a section that indicates nothing prohibits the legislative body from providing the public with additional physical locations in which the public may observe and address the legislative body related to the business of the board. And the Brown Act actually encourages that. So with the direction provided, over the course of the last six weeks or so, the communications team has been working hard in conjunction with, with our internet, our technology team as well in making sure that the access we have available, they've identified a location on the Avalon site in one of the auditoriums where they would have access to residents on Catalina Island or on Avalon for a simulcast of the meeting. So it would be an in-person, another physical location in which those residents of Catalina can participate in the board meeting, similar to our meeting earlier today where we had the Zoom conference with Mr., Zoom conference. We have that set up, ready to go, so that members can observe the meeting as it's going on through a YouTube connection, not a YouTube connection, Zoom, Zoom connection, secure Zoom connection, so it's only at that site. And then also be able to provide public comment directly from Avalon that will show up on the monitors here for you to observe. And so we did, over the course of last month, at our last meeting, the communications teams tested that out, have worked out the technology components of it. Staff is still working now to figure out how to integrate the public comment period so that we're going to have some commenters from potentially the island and some commenters here. Nothing really extends the requirements that the board has already included related to the length of time for public comments, three minutes for an item, 30 minutes total, those kinds of comments. We're still working on a process for integrating how we will, we'll integrate those so that everybody will have the chance within those timelines to participate. And so, from a staff perspective, we've done that work. We're ready to go with that, and we're just seeing if there's any-- and we're just seeing if there's any questions and if there's any consensus or any direction provided as to if and when that might start. That's the staff report.
Thank you, Jeff. So I guess two two observations with, I guess, an embedded question. One is, I want to thank the community members from Avalon that actually brought to our attention the challenges, and I'll use this word, the hardship that was caused by, you know, the commute to be able to attend one of our meetings in person. And then, you know, by a certain time, you kind of were stuck here because you couldn't get back to the island, right? So this came from a point of one of our values around community engagement. So I want to acknowledge that folks had to bring this to our attention, right? For us to presumably take action. But as an immediate follow-up to that, just big kudos to our team for not waiting for the board to figure out what we want to do and equipping ourselves with being able to do exactly what our conversations at that point led us to, which was to provide an opportunity for the community members of Avalon, who are a part of our district, who we serve, we have a school there, in addition to the services that we provide to the families and caregivers there, for our team to build our capacity to be able to deliver on our values around public participation and community engagement. So it sounds like, I guess my question here, Jeff, that we have capacity to move forward on that. What do you sort of need from us? Is it just a yes, let's do this at the next meeting or as soon as possible, Jeff?
Yeah, I do want to thank the team that really worked on this because they did figure out all the logistics. And I think I failed to mention, the staff at Avalon also are going to be part of this process because they'll provide some support there. But yes, everything logistically is ready to go, it's just a matter of getting some direction as to if you want to start that at the next meeting or sometime thereafter. I think we're just seeking some, not a vote, but just seeking some directions, direction.
Well, without any objection from my colleagues, I say we go ahead as soon as possible. I know that this is something that will be a benefit to our Catalina community. I know that we've had one of the Avalon city council members attend our meetings, and she's let us know what she's had to go through in order to be here in person. So I have, I guess, a question about process. So how do we let our Catalina community know that this will be available?
That's a good question. I'm not sure that we necessarily thought of that piece. It will be, well, we will publish it, it'll be on the website, it'll be post, there'll be a posting on that. And so I don't know if there's some thoughts around the community and also some ways of pushing that out.
Yeah, the communication team has worked on communications that will go out through the school office and provide families and other residents with information. Then we'll have other ways to post in the city and residential areas for those to know how to come and speak and what the process will be.
Thank you. I think it's going to be well received, and so I'm excited that we get to share that good news. Okay, so thank you, that was an information-only, no vote needed item. So next, we have 16.1, Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures. This is a real easy one.
This is just the acceptance as an information item of the first quarterly report for Williams, which actually indicates no complaints, therefore no resolution. So it comes to you and then gets submitted to the Los Angeles County Office of Education.
Thank you. And then next, we have item 17.1, Reappointment of Personnel Commissioner, Dr. Baker.
Yes, I am pleased to introduce this item, and I would like to welcome Ms. Cheryl Bender to the podium. There she is. Welcome, Cheryl. So tonight is
Good evening.
Tonight is an important night as we make the recommendation for Ms. Bender to continue as Personnel Commissioner. She began in August 2018 and was reappointed in December of 2021. And we are pleased to make that recommendation. If you want to say anything tonight, Ms. Bender, or if you just
Certainly. First and foremost, I am extraordinarily grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve in the wake of an adventurous year and some change. I continue to be amazed at the way that the team has buckled down, banded together, and stepped up. And what we have seen as a result of that is that we have a team now who has never felt more supported, more included, and, you know, and just encouraged by participation in so many of our, you know, new initiatives from all across the district. It's something we are exceptionally grateful for, and we're very excited about what it's going to look like going forward now that we're on this path. And so I'm really, really happy to have the opportunity to be a part of that.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I believe we are voting on this.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for your service up to this point.
Thank you.
Right. And let's make it official, so I'll ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes four zero.
Thank you very much, especially to Dr. Baker, the district leadership team, and the board. We appreciate you.
Thank you. The feeling is mutual. Next on the agenda, we have item 17.2, Recommendations from the Special Education Community Advisory Committee. Yes, or I think it was referred to as the CAC party earlier.
Yes, so yes, I'm so excited and honored to welcome our CAC, who is a group of parents and community advocates that really advocate for students with disabilities. And so today, Ms. Jackie Chavez, the secretary of the CAC, will be sharing their recommendations with us. I do want to acknowledge that Ms. Michelle Bailey, the president, and Jackie, were going to present today. However, oh, are you here? Oh, Ms. Bailey is here, but she's not feeling at her best. So Ms. Chavez will be doing the presentation. And both of them have been just amazing and both presented to our CAC last month. They work really closely with Ms. Maruna Watu Laskar and Melissa Stark with OCIPD. Ms. Laskar is our SALPA Director for Special Education. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you.
Doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Sosa Valdarama, we have two copies of the presentation. Is there any difference between the copy that we're receiving now versus what was in our board packets?
Um, I Did you change it?
So we should use the version that was just distributed?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure we were looking at the same, at the correct presentation.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, let's dive in. I do want to recognize the rest of our board members here. And here as well. So, okay, so one thing I did want to say right before we get going is I just really want to ask you guys that as you listen to this presentation, that you listen with open hearts and open minds. And please just listen with a lot of mindfulness. And at any point, if you feel uncomfortable, we ask that you please lean into that discomfort and that you please be curious. Okay, so let's jump in. So I'll be, we were going to present together, but I'll be presenting. So we have five recommendations that we'd like to present tonight. Sorry, four recommendations, and I do apologize, there is a typo in the presentation that has a mislabel in the numbering, so it'll say five, but there's really just four. So I'm going to start with sharing a little bit of background. So just so that you understand how we collected the data and we reviewed the records that we used to develop these recommendations. Then I'm going to go straight into the recommendations and go through each one individually. The difference between that presentation and the one you have here, the copy that you have here, is this one has a few additional slides that talk about the recommendations in action. And what those are, are the, like, our proposals of what we think that would look, the recommendation would look in practice. Okay, for the interest of time, I'm going to try to run through this as fast as I can. So, you know, hit the highlights and stuff. But please, this is yours for your review, I'm giving you homework. And next time you go to a CAC meeting, we will quiz you on it. No, I'm kidding, we won't quiz you. Okay, so let's jump straight into the information. And this is important just so that everyone understands how we went through. Like, we didn't just pull these things out of the air. We have a slightly different presentation than what you guys are used to in previous years too, and that was done with a lot of intention, and you will see why as we go through it. So when we look at the data that we're collecting, you also should have an additional form there that's labeled, you know, recommendations, and it's like 2024 Recommendation Form. No, okay. That's an example of the forms that we hand out. So last year, so these are the recommendations that we're formulating from the information we got last year. Those are available at the meetings, they're emailed as well as both Google Forms and just direct emails to our distribution. In addition, we hold a workshop every May where we kind of, you know, have people give us their feedback on where they think the area of need is, what the recommendation is, and any ideas for making these measurable recommendations too, which is really important. In addition to that, something else we take into account are public comments. Our public comments at the CAC meetings are very sacred to us. This is really what brings a lot of people out, you know? And being able to share our experiences lets us see that it's not just us, there are systems at play here, and that's very important. And so something else that we did that was very different this year, and this is part of why the presentation is there, we went back and did a look back, we did a record review. And what that means is we went back and, so once we gathered the data, we had that all, we categorize it, we analyze it, we put it into different buckets, we make this beautiful Excel sheet. And then we went back and actually went back and looked at the previous board recommendations we had made to the board. Oh, thank you, I've been forgetting to do that. My bad. Thank you. So we went back as far as 2017 because that's what this board had access to, and it was so insightful to be able to see that. And from it, you could really see that we had some big wins, and we really want to celebrate those big ones. One of them is like the co-teaching that you heard earlier someone make a comment on. That's huge. That's huge, not just for students with disabilities, but it's huge for all of our students, you know? And we're, you know, we know that it's still a work in progress, we know it's still something that's being worked on, but we hope to see that more, and we hope to see it expand even further. You know, we were really grateful to see it expand into the middle schools, but we know that some are still working through some of that. So one of the things that really jumped out though, as we were going through this, is that we have some things that just keep coming up year after year after year, and the same this year too. And it's IEPs and professional development. Those are two that catch our eyes immediately, right? There's others here, but when you have the same complaints and you have the same areas of need being highlighted year after year after year, I'm telling you, there's something broken, and we've got to fix it. So when we just keep applying more of the same and we expect different results, that's not going to work. So we really wanted to use this opportunity today to highlight some of that, and especially the IEP, okay? So we're going to go straight into the recommendation. Our first recommendation is an IEP system audit. And we use the word audit very intentionally, very intentionally. We want you to, we want a full audit of the whole system. We want to identify the parts that haven't worked, you know? And we want to highlight the ones that do, right? So this isn't about, this recommendation isn't about the philosophy of a different approach to use with IEPs. We are talking about the foundation things of the IEPs. We're talking about logistics, right? When there are issues with logistics, like interpretation still, right? When there are issues with scheduling, the foundation, like just foundational things to make these meetings happen, you know? We've really got to, we've really got to make that tight. We've got to really address those, right? So for this first one, we are also grounding everything on the IEP too, as we go through the recommendations, right? So I'm going to highlight the problems that we got for feedback from our parents. And this is important because I really, really want you guys to understand the things that we hear so frequently, that we heard so frequently last year and we have heard throughout the years. And these are logistical things. We're not talking about philosophies, we're not talking about different approaches. We're just talking about getting these meetings done, right, and getting these IEPs in place. So scheduling issues, big one, every year, every year, multiple comments, all the time, scheduling issues. Not implementing IEPs, this is the main thing that drives people to our meetings. Just the lack of implementation, not implementing them correctly, not at all, just a lack of awareness. So this is what, the main thing that drives people to our meetings, you know? The lack of incorrect or greatly delayed interpretation and translation services. Come on, I'm sorry, but it just comes up all the time, it still comes up. And this is just like, if you don't understand what's going on, if you can't read the documents, if you can't understand what's going on, you can't actively participate. And being able to actively participate in an IEP is fundamental. This is what makes you part of the IEP team. Without that, it's like, you know, your hands are tied. So the other, so moving on, let's see. Not providing or posting IEP documents or IEP progress reports. Providing incomplete IEP documents without goals, the offer, teacher feedback, baselines, oh boy, baselines. Man, do we hear a lot about baselines. We really need to work on baselines and assessments. So imagine going into an IEP, right? First of all, imagine not having these documents before an IEP so that you can review them, you know, and be informed, so you can be prepared to participate. But then you walk into an IEP, and this is so hard for us, you know? This is not our job, we are parents, we are just, you know, we are talking about our children here. This is hard. And now you go into this IEP and you don't even have complete documents, you know? You don't have the feedback that you were looking for. It's really hard. Okay, this one, this one hits. And we weren't sure how to say it, but we're just saying it. Sandbagging goals and lowering academic expectations and outcomes. This one, sorry, this one's hard. This one really speaks to the culture. Sorry. You have to assume that our children are competent. This really speaks to the culture, right? That ableism of subtle expectations. And not so subtle, too. We want our children to learn. The intent of an IEP, right, is to make progress and to close that gap. We want our children to be challenged. That's important. Using fear, stigma, and misinformation to discourage parents from seeking assessments, IEPs, and 504s. It happens, we hear about it all the time. Delays and cheating of the timeline with re-convened practices, in particular for initials and re-evaluation IEPs. So this speaks to, one of the speakers earlier was talking about compliance. This lets you check off the box that you complied, you did this IEP within this timeframe because you had this meeting. But let's say you walk into this IEP, right, and you don't have your documents. So what happens there? You can't participate, you don't have the goals, those aren't set yet. So you have to then schedule another IEP. And why does this matter? Because you're likely not going to get it for the next week because I just told you we have scheduling issues. So now you're looking at a few weeks out, and what does this do? At the end of the day, it's about the kids, right? It's about the students. This means that their services, this means that their goals, what they're working on, what we want them to be challenged on, are now getting delayed and pushed further. And when you have a child, you know, time is so precious. That's what you have, especially when you're working on remediation or when you're working on certain things, right? Just the basic understanding of IEPs and/or disability by principals, counselors, and classroom teachers. This, again, so many comments on this every year. And then the IEP template is just difficult to navigate. And I got to tell you, I have a master's in science and two bachelor's degrees. Like, research papers are like my love language. I can dissect those, like, I get so much joy. I can dissect those, like, I get so much joy. Going through an IEP will bring me to my knees. It's just structurally like, like wonky. Like, yeah, it's just like hard to follow. There's just like weird boxes here and there. And, and it's not just parents, too. It's staff, too, right? So, our experts that are working on the IEPs daily, they're, you know, they're, they're very well aware of what it is. But just, I'm, I'm talking to other staff. And so, now you have a classroom teacher who's supposed to go through this IEP and pick out your accommodations or pick out all these other things. And it's just, it's just like a wonky document. I don't know how else to say it. Okay. So, our recommendation for, our first recommendation for the IEP systematic, these were, these were our ideas. We want, we want you to please identify these failed practices. And we want you to do that with feedback from students and families, okay? Because there are, there's something broken, right? So, we gotta identify those so that we can fix them. We want you to develop intervention plans of remediation, to remediate patterns of failed practices with direct feedback and by and again from students with disabilities and with their families. Develop targeted, site-specific intervention plans and coaching, especially for sites that have higher incidences of non-compliance or just repeat failed practices. We want you to provide all IEP documents with translation, if necessary, to families and all the IEP team members at least one week prior to IEPs. This right here is gonna solve a lot of problems. If you have access to all your documents, if the whole team, because many times the whole team doesn't have them. If the whole team has access, you know, for a week. And I'm not talking, I've, I've requested, I've requested IEPs and gotten them two hours before the meeting. I've gotten them a day before the meeting. Dude, we're working. We're just trying to get through the day some days. You need enough time to be able to sit down and look at this complicated document and understand it so you can actively participate in these meetings. And I'm telling you, if you, if we do this, it, it will really change things, you know? It will change the whole dynamic of the team, too. And then, looking at, after you have the IET, after you have the IEP, we wanna make sure that we have all our IEP documents with translation, if necessary, be provided to families. So, within, within a week. And again, this really matters, too, because after you have a meeting, you're, you're reviewing everything you, that went through. Sometimes you're going back and forth. And services don't start until you sign off on that. So, this means there's gonna be a delay in services, too, if you're not getting those, those documents. If you're waiting for translation, oh, my goodness, you know? So, now your kid, you're stuck there. You might want to sign off. You might want these services to start, but you can't even do that because you still haven't gotten those, those in. And then, please, consider changing the template so that it's more friendly. And also, please, add measurable progress, add measurable progress to your IEP reports. Having those baselines. You know, I watched the, the presentations addressing the board goals, and they were really awesome. Like, they're breaking down, right, the progress. They're breaking down the data. We get progress, we get IEP progress report, I believe it's twice a year. And in those, they're just based on like a scale from not making progress to meeting to met. It doesn't provide enough information for us, right? If you just get something that says "making progress," well, what does that look like? It doesn't provide enough information for the teams, either, to be able to be flexible and make adjustments as needed. So, I won't go through, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm taking my time, well, not trying to. But I won't go through all the specifics of the recommendation and action, but they are here. You have homework. This is some ideas that we have of how, how this recommendation might look in, in practice. But I do wanna highlight one, which is, we, we really recommend, we would really like to see that IEPs inclusion and achievement goals, please, achievement goals, be discussed at the monthly principal meetings. You gotta be talking about this at everything. You can't have inclusion if you're not talking about disability in every aspect of the district. Okay, recommendation number two. And again, I apologize for the typo in, it says, three, when we go. Oh, no, that one's good there. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, for this one, staff, our second recommendation is staff training and coaching in these following areas. Every year, this comes up, and we got so much of this, this year as well. And so, in these following areas, IEP and 504 purpose and implementation. Understanding the purpose of that document, I feel like sometimes gets so overlooked. It's not just something there to make people's lives harder. It really isn't, you know? It's, it's, it's the program that is gonna, it's the program, it's the plan of how that student is gonna close those achievement gaps. And it's also something that's written into our educational law. And it came on the shoulders of a lot of effort and hard work of civil rights leaders because disability rights are civil rights. And still today, we continue to work on those. So, please, setting high achieving measurable goals and outcomes. Such an important one. Evidence-based best practices of instruction for our diverse learners. This one, man, this is a good one. We really want more training and coaching when it comes to universal design of learning. Anti-ableism culture and sensitivity training. Please provide dedicated and protected time for hands-on coaching and practice-driven collaboration beyond input-filled sit-and-getts. I'm gonna say that again. Our recommendation is to please provide, please dedicate, please provide dedicated and protected time for hands-on coaching, classroom coaching, and practice-driven collaboration. And, you know, think about, you're in a math class. Imagine if your teacher just kind of explained how to do a problem, but you never actually got to work through it and practice it. Monitor, please, monitor through in-class coaching and the implementation of the success of the training, too. This lets you have more accountability, too, but not just more accountability. It, you know, having this, being able to monitor how, how things are going in the classroom is gonna be really helpful. Okay. And then, again, you have your recommendations in action to take a look at. One of the ones we did wanna highlight is we would like to see or recommend that we at least get one day per semester for anti-ableism, anti-ableism culture training. So, it would be just two, twice a year. Okay, recommendation number three. This is so important, and we get this every year as well. And really, just kind of speaks to the core of a lot of this, right? We are requesting an ADA compliance audit. So, if you can't enter the facility, or there are a great deal of barriers to get into the facility, you can't learn, or you're just adding that many more layers for a family, for a student, to get to where they have to be. If you're in the facility and you can't move around freely, that's also an issue. So, please, audit every facility and grounds for compliance. We want you to report, we want a report of accessibility plans for every new and existing infrastructure made to caregivers and community. Please, again, if you're able to work with the municipalities to improve ADA compliance on public streets and surrounding sites. So, this is one of the things we hear a lot. Parents go and they say, "We really need help. Drop-off is impossible." You know, "We, we don't have blue spots to use." Well, there are technically blue spots in the staff parking lots. That makes them compliant. But those staff parking lots are closed because they're for the staff. It makes sense. That's a safety issue, right? So, what does the family do? This is difficult. Oh, audit the accessibility of playgrounds for all students. You're a five-year-old, you're a six-year-old, and you can't play during recess? That's sad. Okay, audit facility safety, monetization, and adjust all current and future, I think, facility plans with a disability framework. And this really plays into what we were talking about. You really can't have inclusion without looking at every aspect of the district, every aspect, without talking about and thinking about it within a disability framework. We want you to prioritize the monetization and accessibility of all spaces that help students with disability. And please, immediately remedy and change unsafe, inaccessible, or segregated classrooms to meet spaces for students. This doesn't mean that if you identify something that's unsafe, you wait until next year to change that classroom. You know, when something's unsafe, it's unsafe. Is that if there's an old furnace in that room, you know, that can cause an injury, we gotta take care of that. So, again, take a look at your actions, recommendations in action. One, one of the things we would really love to see, though, is for that audit and for that report to be presented to the board. This really matters, and then we think it's really important that the board be aware. And we think it's really important that it be presented here. Okay, and then, we're gonna tie it all back with our last one, which is ADR data audit. So, the ADR, when someone goes to ADR, that means there's been a breakdown in the IEP process, right? You're seeking resolution. You had to go outside of your IEP team because you, you, you're, you're stuck, right? So, now you seek ADR, which, you know, honestly, we've heard some really good feedback on, too. And we've heard some less good feedback on. But, so, you're going, you're stepping outside of your IEP team to find that resolution, and you're working with a mediator at that point. So, we are asking for this data audit because we want, we want to know. Please report the data while respecting privacy. We want to know who's accessing it. Is it equitable? Who's using it, right? And what's, yeah, so it's really important. How is this data being used to make informed choices about curriculum, policies, programs, site, or staff development? This one is why we're bringing it back. We started with IEPs, right? We're ending with a process that's available if there is a breakdown there. But this is such a unique opportunity, you know, to actually look at where the breakdowns are. You know, so if you can, if, if you can really crunch down on those breakdowns, it gives you this unique window to make better informed choices and adjustments to, to the curriculum, to any policies, any programs, any sites, any development. So, yeah, so how is this data used to understand and remedy any patterns of ableism, misconduct, abuse, and non-compliance? I wish I didn't have to say that, but I do because it comes up. And we have to make sure, we're representing our parents that provide us the feedback. And it's not easy to do that. So, again, another great opportunity to look at that data and see how we can correct these practices. And then, again, actually, really awesome is we have heard really great feedback sometimes from these, right? So, what worked? You know, what are you finding in the data that worked? And how can you replicate it, right? The thing about ADR, though, that you have to keep in mind is when things break down and you're looking for that resolution, you're addressing it, but you're addressing it for one child, right? So, if you have a system where you see patterns, right? Where there's been patterns, maybe at a specific site, or maybe with a specific program, or maybe with a specific practice, right? You have the opportunity to take this to beyond that one child, beyond that one student that, you know, trying to find that resolution and apply it across the board. We would really like those findings to be reported at a, at a board meeting as well. We feel this is really important for you as board members and the communities that you are representing to hear what the results of this are. So, that's, that's it. I hope you have questions.
I'm, I'm still thinking about the part where research papers are your love language.
Spreadsheets as well.
So, Mr. Otto, do you have a question or comment?
Well, maybe just a statement, and that is, I hear what you're saying. Obviously, these programs are incredibly important to what we do at this district. And I think you're, you've already documented that there are issues. And that, but it's a classic management problem. It's something that you have to say. You have to do an audit, but what you have to do is come up with, what's the problem? What are the proposed solutions? What are the timelines? And how are we gonna validate that what we're doing, what we're doing? And I think we're very capable of doing that or getting the resources together to do that. And I, I 100% support what it is that you're suggesting. And I think that this isn't the type of thing that should take, take a very, very long time. It just needs to have the, have the shoulder to the wheel on this. And, and it can be done, and it should be done because it's so important.
Yeah. Let's do it. Yeah, let's do it.
Dr. Beneathus.
All right, I'm gonna try to hold my emotions here, too. First, I want to express my gratitude for the work that is involved with all of you and every other person that contributed to these recommendations. And I'm gonna say this, and I, and I hope it's taken in the spirit of action.
Say it.
There's, there's so much tact in grace in the way that you've been saying things. And it almost comes off as like apologetic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. So, I wanna make sure to our CAC community, to our disability advocates, to our disability champions, never be apologetic about what this district should and can do better. Because I think we also have a responsibility to model for those parents that are not able to, for a variety of reasons, where communication has broken down, where trust has been violated, where folks have felt that they've been gaslighted for expressing these concerns. So, more power, you know, speaking to power, I, I think we have a responsibility to acknowledge that I sensed anxiety and hesitation in your voice, and I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm really sorry that you feel that you have to say things in a certain way because then they're not well-received, or then you're gaslighted, or then you're made to feel lesser than, or that you're demanding or advocating for something that we shouldn't be.
Their survival skills.
Yes. So, I, I wanted to first acknowledge and express gratitude for the courage that it takes. But also, I'm apologizing that we have, we collectively, right? We as a system have made you feel like you have to be like tactful and sort of on eggshells because of the potential response and ramifications for advocating for our children and our students. So, that being said,
Thank you.
I, I wanna focus on the action piece, on the measure piece. This is awesome. Here's my sort of analysis of the recommendations. And that's why I was asking, is there a difference? Because we've had, we've had a chance to look at these. We got these, the presentation on Wednesday, so I have a bunch of thoughts, all right? No questions, thoughts? And then, I wanna see, okay, what are your thoughts on these thoughts? I would have loved, and I know you have the data, this is data.
Yes.
This is data with leading indicators, with outcomes, right? So, kudos to the framing of this. So, for instance, for, for recommendation number one, you started off by, here are some problems with IEPs. Here's the recommendation. Here's what we wanna see, all right? So, I would suggest the thinking through, because I know you have it, for the other recommendations that were, that we framed them that way, too. And here's why, right? Because of the measurable piece. When, when data is shared, and I, and I've been mentioning this to Mr. Moskovitz and the team, when data is shared, that's essential because now we have data. And this is data, right? The interviews that you do, the focus groups that you do, the public comment that you hear, that's data for us, right? We have data. Kind of the next level of that is what does the data tell us? What, what does this mean to a student? What does this mean to a caregiver? What does this mean to our collective student success value, all right, around inclusion? And again, the indicators that we're using for that. Which then, the third piece to me, if it's in alignment with, here's what the data is, here's what the data's saying. Well, then, how do we know? How do we know that we are addressing these issues? That things have been resolved? That we're showing improvement or growth? That's key to me because that's then how we hold ourselves and our systems accountable. And so, I'm gonna build on Mr. Otto's comment on audit. I would venture to say, and I can't qualify this in any way, that probably most of our team, and I'm gonna look at Dr. Sosa Valderrama, team, and I'm gonna look at Dr. Sosa Valderrama, knows about these systemic, structural issues that we have. I mean, Dr. Baker knows about the issues around interpretation and translation. So, so in some regards, an audit is absolutely valuable, but these, to your own presentation, are systemic issues that have been shared with us for years.
Yes.
Now, and, and I, and again, I, I would venture to say that all of our sped team, you talked about teachers that know the wonkiness of the IP. So to me, it's also about separating out those things that have already been identified that we're already trying to address from the time and energy and then the lack of action that our community is gonna see if we do an audit for a year and come back and say, here are all these findings, well, probably 99% of them, you already know.
Yes.
What the issues are, right? So that's an observation that I would, really would like CAC, our, our disability community to sort of ponder, what do we really get out of the audit if a lot of what we would find in an audit is already known, codified? And again, it's not, I'm not, I'm not trying to push you to answer or respond, these are just observations.
I want to respond though.
Okay, go ahead.
What we get out of that is that then you guys become aware. Because we know what the problems are. Come to a CAC meeting and you will see the, the raw emotions there. You will hear all this feedback. And if I can be totally like, just keep it real, or, you know, a lot of our staff there, they're totally aware of it. You know, I feel so bad sometimes where we're just like going through and saying all these things. They're aware. They're, you know, they, they wanna work on it too. But it, it just can't be the special education office. It has to go across the whole district. You know, you, you can't just isolate it to there because it, it's just not doable. It has to go across every, every aspect of the district.
Understood. So keeping that in mind as a foundational anchor, right? We did a communications audit a couple of years ago. And here's my concern about, not about doing an audit, right? It's about the time and energy and resources spent for things that we already know. And, and I'm not, I'm talking about the collective system, we, right? Of course, some teachers, some of our sped staff, you know, would benefit from professional development trainings. That action is not the outcome. I'm not hearing from you that the trainings in and of themselves, the coaching in and of itself, the professional development in and of itself is the outcome, right? That's what's needed so that we're not ableist.
Yes.
So that we're not violating procedures, so that we're not, so that we are upholding compliance, right, around things. But it's anchored in the value around inclusion, respect, empathy, right? All of these things that are, you've been conveying to, as long as I've been on this board, that I've been hearing. So here's where I'm gonna look at Dr. Sosa Valderrama, not because she doesn't know this, not because she doesn't have an understanding and a context, and not because I wanna undermine those great things that you said we are doing. But there's a disconnect of what I'm hearing from what we talk about and know about at the district level? The policies that we pass around inclusion and equity and excellence? And then the accountability to make sure, to ensure that we are actually doing that when we're interfacing with parents, when we're interfacing with our community?
This, so this is really why we added the coaching in there.
Yeah.
Because we really feel that that is when, when that magic is happening.
Yeah.
And that is where you're actually monitoring what's going out and providing real practical, you know, training and helping, you know? It, it's like a lab, right?
Yeah.
Like, I'm sorry, I'm gonna talk about science, I can't help myself.
Sure.
You have your lecture, right?
Yep.
You learn the stuff, but then you go to a lab to actually practice it, right? You have to actually, we talk about projects. In fact, at the last meetings, right, we talk about project-based learnings. Same vibes.
So what, let, let's, can I just ask one example? And, and again, I, I'm glad that this is a dialogical thing, but, but I, I don't want to come off as me being dismissive of this. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we hold us accountable? Like, what do you need from us? Cause we'll vote today and we'll say, thank you for submitting this. I hope we get a favorable vote, that we are accepting these recommendations. Absolutely, we agree. Is it an action item or an information item? Okay, information, information. But again, you're gonna get a consensus, public consensus, yes. The audit is a piece that requires work, right? And, and then there's findings from the audit and then there's actions that come to that. So again, if we know interpretation and translation is not being provided, or not being provided consistently, if we know that scheduling of IEPs is an issue, this is why I was looking at you, Dr. Sosa Valderrama, I think these are things that are already known. So again, my thinking here is, what pieces do we already know about that we're either not addressing or not addressing consistently versus those broader sort of issues around how do we change and shift the culture of ableism in our district? That, that is, is not like a tomorrow solution. So a, a, again, this is not directed to you, it's directed to everyone that's listening. We can do, some of these, like to me is like, you heard about the Avalon thing today, like we built capacity in six weeks, we're delivering on, there was a structural inequity that folks from Avalon could not participate in our meetings. And so that's the piece where I, not as an answer to put it all on you today, that I'm challenging our team to think about from these recommendations, there are things, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing the team here writing notes that are completely unacceptable, that require for us to just say, hey, team, this needs to be done consistently now in our schools. But the assumption there is that, again, that, that already isn't being done. So I guess, again, the, the broader, I know you said this isn't an approach issue or a philosophical issue. I would like to hear from our team to not put it back on our caregivers and parents, kind of how do we think through many of these things that have been talked about for years? But some of them require just immediate action, not from our board, from, but from our team, versus those kind of deeper systemic culture, values, issues that, again, an audit, I, I welcome the idea from audit, but I don't want us to get caught up in all the time and energy and, and resources that you've spent, social capital, human capital that you've spent, to tell us to do what we should have been doing in the first place? But the nuance of, maybe we didn't know about these things. What are those things that we didn't already know about that we're so grateful for the work that's done? So again, opening it up to the team here, just in thoughts of how we maneuver, given that there's some actionable items.
I mean, I guess the thing that I would open with is, first of all, let's not look just to Dr. Sosa Valderrama.
No, no.
In the spirit of this, because this is an us.
Yes.
An entire organizational challenge.
Absolutely.
And so I wanna open with that. I also, from the learnings that we have continued to do, especially deeply over the last several years, in how we proceed with community and not just creating an action plan that is not done with CAC and other parents, I really wanna push pause on the, the what actions will you take tonight? This is an opportunity to center the voice of those who are feeling marginalized and having to come forward and make a set of recommendations in the courageous way that they have tonight. And I, I want us to thoughtfully proceed in the way that we, with the community, create an action plan for that. So I think your voice around what needs to be audited, what doesn't need to be audited, there are many details to work out a plan to this. I, I absolutely see a path forward in the leadership around this table, not solely in a department, and how we can serve in creating a plan with the CAC community. So not that there can't be anything said, but I just wanna really pause and go back to where this is coming from and not take away and not get into a, what can we do about this single thing when really it is for us to reflect and to think about what has been shared, all of us. And of course, specifically, there are aspects of this that will be led by the Office of School Support Services. So I don't wanna discount Dr. Sosa Valderrama, but to, to think about all of our role in that, so.
And, and thank you, Dr. Baker, because that's certainly not, if I, if I, if I articulate it that way, that is not the sentiment that I wanted to convey. But I also know that we have heard these things before and that, and I'll say, I'll use an I, and that I have asked for updates and that issues have come up around, related to agenda items that we've had in the past, and we have talked about a plan, right? And, and I'm glad that we're affirming that this plan is with community. So my question was not so much like, hey, let's hammer out a menu right now, what's in there, what's not? But more to, to, to make sure that we had affirmation from our superintendent that that is the approach that we're taking. All right, so thank you for that.
We can come back. We would be happy to come back. You know, like one of the points to do that with the other recommendations, the only reason we didn't do that is because we were limited on time.
But if a recommendation is enough for us to establish an action plan, great. But if we need validations, because maybe someone thinks, oh, it's maybe one in a hundred, but in reality is one in 10 that is having these particular issues, then it gives it more priority, right? So it's validation mostly what, what we will be looking for. But just to give you an example, on the translation or interpretation of, of documents. At work, I have to do everything in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, because I work for all of Latin America and the US. Three years ago, if I use Google Translate to just click and translate a document, I will still have to send it to review and then local people will tell me, oh, it was wrong here, it was wrong here, I changed this and, and go through a different review. Today, I get the feedback that everything checks out. And we don't need to wait for a fancy AI translation tool. If we use Google Translate, it already is a very good item. And with a click, if you get the right tool and the right system, you can have multiple languages. There is no excuse at this particular moment in time that we cannot use technology to immediately translate every single document.
Also, excuse me. I like your feedback, Dr. Benitez. I would love for us to be able to come together and create a plan, but you have to remember to include us. If you don't have parents who are in elementary school, middle school, and high school with children with disabilities, you do not have a complete plan. Because you guys only see one part, just like we can't come up with program ideas for you guys to implement because we're not on that side. So we appreciate the feedback we've gotten from staff for how to implement some of these items. But like me, I have first, two first graders with disabilities. I have no clue what Jackie's going through with the middle schooler until she told me. I am so not in that world. So when you go to implement policy, you have to have our voices, even if you just meet with the CAC board or come to, consistently come to the board meeting. We wanna see all of you there, we've seen many of you participate. But if you come to us when you're trying to implement programs, you can get actual feedback for people who are actually there. And the one thing I do wanna like hit on with the coaching, it's very different than the trainings that they've gotten. We've had some of the employees go into some of the parent, the IEP meetings. One, the staff has been offended that the parent would even ask for someone to come into the meeting. And that creates a very bad dynamic for when that staff member's not there to support that family. But even the staff member is appalled that the teachers are not implementing the items, the things the teachers are saying, the things that they're denying that we have the ability, the support we have the ability to give to our student is being denied. So if the people in those departments who are supposed to help guide that staff member are shocked in the IEP, we need more of them to go into the IEP at random so that parents aren't being subjected to like the abuse of staff members when they get support from someone with, in the department. Those are the type of things that you need when you make program decisions, the imprint from the staff that's going in from the outside and the parents who are, who are going through these things. We would love to help with programs. Come to us, we are here, we, our kids are the loves of our lives. There's nothing we wouldn't do for our kids. I will show up at midnight if you want someone to help you with an elementary program idea. We will be there regardless of when it is and what it is. We know when we help our children, it helps every other child in the district. As long as you guys remember, our voice matters in every program. Because unless you're there in the middle of it, you don't understand what it's like.
So thank you, and just, just to mention that we are listening and you know that we're listening. And the commitment is not that I am going to finish or write a plan for you, because it's important for you to be a part of that plan. You've been working with Maruna and Melissa, and our hope is not that you just work with them, like we want to, we are also advocates for our students with disabilities and our goal is to get this whole district involved in being welcoming spaces for all our kids.
Well, I just got up because you gave a speech and I feel like you need support. But going back, you say you heard it over and over again. Truth of the matter is, it's not solved. That's why you're gonna hear it over and over again. When issues occurred, when it's solved, you're not gonna hear it. So if you've been hearing for a long time, years over years, that mean, like she said, something is broken, it need to be fixed. She doesn't come from an educational background, I do, so I kinda understand, you know, what you're saying and where she's coming from also. So like I said again, if you're saying things that, you know, you heard, but you want tangible stuff, it can't, because this is just a report, it's over and over again, it gotta be fixed. We don't know, we know the issues, but we don't have the answer for it. So that's why we gotta have an answer for it. Okay? So, but by the way, well, I don't know, this is part of it, I did send an email to some of the staff here. My child, I'm not gonna say, cause I always wanna protect their privacy, have a chance to go to Cal State Long Beach for your college promises. And my child walked for three hours independently and we're just enjoying the campus. And that mean like as life milestone with his typical peers and with his peers. Now, if the school team and the home team didn't collaborate together, I don't think that's possible. But I said, things is possible when we work together, when we work together, you gotta remember that. And this is not for us, it's for our children, cause they're gonna have their future. We have ours, we got our paycheck, we're just sitting here, we got our house, we got our future, but they have to make theirs. And ours have to fight harder, because ours have that disability attached to it. So that's why we're just, I'm just, you know, up here just trying to make, like she said, you know, when you talk about program put in place to have a child, not just our child, it's every child, it's humanity, right? We're here for humanity, for betterment of humanity. So I'm gonna conclude with that.
Well, thank you, everyone. What, I think what I've, what I've heard is a group of parents who just wants this district to treat your children like we treat everyone else. And I know that our kids don't wanna be treated differently, they don't wanna be seen differently, they want opportunities like everybody else. And I appreciate you coming forward, I appreciate all the work it takes to come up with a document like this. It represents a lot of time and a lot of effort on your part. And, and, and I agree with the comments by Dr. Benitez and Mr. Otto about how we need to do better. It's not just about checking boxes, it's not just about, you know, going through the motions or, you know, anything like that. It's about making real change and creating environments where all our kids are, are welcome, where they feel comfortable. And it's all about how we go about it. And I know that we have staff that's taking notes, I know that we are paying attention and we're gonna figure out how we can improve the situation, how we can take these recommendations and, and, and put them into action, because that's what's needed. Our kids, our kids deserve that, they deserve no less than that. So I know that with us working together, because that's what it takes, I also appreciate that sentiment, because that is absolutely the truth. Without the, the parental or caregiver input, it's only half the story. We, as parents, we are the specialists, we are the ones who know our kids the best, we are the ones who know what they need. So putting that together with the experts in the field, I, you know, I believe that we can really do great things for our kids. So thank you for bringing these forward. This is not the last conversation. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to come back and I know that we will continue to collaborate, we're gonna continue to listen and do right by all of our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are gonna go ahead and take a little five-minute recess and re- and reconvene at 7:10. Thank you, everyone. It's a good thing that was not in my reach earlier. I'm going to ask everybody to either be seated or make a quiet exit, because we have just a couple more items on the agenda. So we are going to get to the rest of the agenda. But I am going to move a couple of items around so that we can include our colleagues. So we are going to just reverse the order of 17.3 and 17.4. And so we are going to vote on the approval of the superintendent contract renewal and terms. And we're going to do that now. Yumi, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. I have a statement to read. Prior to the board's consideration of the recommended approval for the amendment to the employment agreement for the superintendent, SB 1436 requires orally introducing actions on items impacting the annual compensation of executive staff. This agenda item approves amending the employment agreement with the superintendent to extend the contract by one year for a new term from September 4, 2024, to September 3, 2028. In addition to other non-substantive modifications, the amendment adjusts the superintendent's salary consistent with her employment agreement and the same salary increase the board provided to all other non-represented managers during the 23-24 school year.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? I was going to have our board secretary take a roll call vote, but she's not here. So...
I can take, I can take roll call.
Dr. Baker, no?
Have somebody else besides Dr. Baker.
Certainly, I can take the roll call vote.
I think that makes sense. So, yes.
Can you write this down? I'll take a roll call vote. For those present on the dais, Member Otto?
We're ready to take the roll call vote, Ms. Lopez. Yep. So how do you vote?
I'm sorry, Leticia. What am I voting on right now? I'm so sorry.
This is the superintendent's contract.
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And student member, I roll your preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we will return to item 17.3, the plan to close Hudson Elementary School at the end of the 2024-2025 school year. And this is an information item only. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. I will begin tonight just by introducing this item that is for information only, which you, thank you for representing that. This is an opportunity for our staff to speak to the different aspects of research and development that were done to bring forward the recommendation of closing Hudson Elementary School and consolidating the attendance boundaries between Hudson Elementary School and Garfield Elementary School. And we have a team tonight that is going to talk about district-wide capacity study, including Hudson, the assessment of the school's educational program, and also the support that will be provided to families through a number of methods in the days ahead. So I'd like to pass to Mr. Miranda first.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. So I'll start off with the facilities data and information.
Also speak to proposed use of the site before turning it back to Mr. Moskovitz for the educational considerations. So first and foremost, last fall, the district started by creating and convening a working group to assess school capacities for classroom space across the entirety of the district. This particular group was tasked with a number of things, but primarily, they were charged with helping us assess and set the framework for assessing school facilities data, including enrollment data, capacity, utilization, room sizes, program needs, and so on and so forth. That group convened a number of times over the course of the full year. So I'd say there was at least eight meetings. There was a number of different representatives from various departments in the district participating in that working group. So we had a voice in the room from the level offices, from special education, from CDC, from research and evaluation, just to make sure we had that particular voice represented in that session. So what did the data tell us? And I'll start with enrollment. So in particular, at Hudson Elementary, small enrollment, enrollment has declined quite a bit over the years. Currently, they're at 231 students. And we project, based on enrollment projections and data from our professional services consultants, that that enrollment is going to continue to decline to under 200 next year and remain that way for a couple of years. We did a spot check of information from the past. So we wanted to gauge just based on our enrollment projections from our consultants, how accurate is that information? So we actually went back, took a step back five years to assess, how close was the enrollment projection five years ago to current date? And it was really accurate, right? So that really gives us that confidence in the numbers going forward, that in fact, the projection is going to be accurate going into next year and further. The data also helped us look to this other category that I'll briefly describe. What does design capacity look like at a school site versus program capacity? So with design capacity, I'll just speak to this very briefly. It's just taking a raw number, a raw count of total classrooms at a school site, adding a multiplier for a loading factor, and getting to a total number, a total capacity as designed, as constructed at that point in time. We felt program capacity is a more accurate depiction and representation of how we utilize space in Long Beach Unified. So with the help of the working group, we're able to assess what that would look like. So it's basically discounting or taking out of the equation certain non-load rooms, rooms, we call them. So these are rooms used for wellness centers, RSP, CDC, Head Start, career tech-type labs, spaces that we wanted to make sure don't count against the school's capacity. We also wanted to make sure we accounted for the accurate loading factor for every classroom in the district. We know core instructional spaces are loaded at a certain range. Special education classrooms are loaded differently. So we have a really accurate set of data to tell us what the program capacity is for every school in the district. Part of our exercise entailed physical walkthrough of every space, every classroom, every door in the district. So again, bringing that confidence level really high up in terms of what the data represents. So when we looked at Hudson's utilization rate, enrollment based on program capacity, they're under 20% currently. So that's a very low utilization rate on that particular campus. The data also helped us look just down the street. So Garfield's within close proximity, roughly half a mile down the street, within walking distance for most students within that boundary. Garfield's capacity was as such that we feel Garfield can absorb quite a bit, if not all of the Hudson students. Their capacity is close to 42%, 43% at this point in time. We know Garfield has also undergone a major renovation as part of the Measure E bond program that took place in 2018. So their spaces are modernized. Their classrooms are outfitted with modern technology. We've addressed accessibility and infrastructure and other facets of the educational environments at that particular school. Garfield has quite a few, it's a large school in terms of total number of classrooms. So they're split in terms of what we would call permanent construction, the permanently built, stick-built classroom buildings versus portable units. When we've done our assessment, we feel the entirety of this new student body could fit within the permanent buildings, right? So there is definitely a fit there as well. I'll speak to one last piece before turning it over to Mr. Moskovitz. And that just speaks to proposed or potential use going forward for the Hudson campus. Just this evening, I've been up here a couple of times and we've addressed a few facilities matters. We know we're working hard and fast on the bond program to address a number of additional needs across various campuses in the district. We also know Measure Q, passed by voters in 2022, afforded us the ability to get into different parts of campus renovations, right? So not just, you know, doing what we've been doing, which is definitely important, right? Addressing HVAC, infrastructure, accessibility, finishes, and technology. We're still doing that, that very work going forward. Yet Measure Q is affording us the ability to also address portable removal, green spaces, outdoor learning environments, sustainability, career tech labs, you know, a host of new categories. I say that because what we predict is the need for additional swing space. And Hudson could serve as that swing space. You know, I reference Butler as it's currently housing Washington students today. But we've been able to benefit from these swing space facilities for when schools are undergoing construction. And we feel Hudson can serve in that manner as well.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda, and really appreciate Mr. Miranda and his entire team. They do great work. And in looking at the school capacities, it's really important. I would say even more importantly is regardless of the size of the school, we want to make sure that students have a very educationally sound program. Right now at Hudson, this school year, there's only one teacher per grade level, kindergarten through fifth grade. And one of the greatest ways that we can ensure teacher success is that teachers have a partner to collaborate with. Somebody to help create assessments, somebody to help to support students, somebody to plan together with, whether it's units of instruction. In many of our schools, we'll have teachers who kind of divide up the work around planning and share that with one another. And additionally, this year, for example, we are, we're training all of our elementary teachers on quality English learner development practices. And one of the ways that we've asked schools to support that is to make sure that there are only adjacent levels of English learner language levels within a classroom, so that a teacher can really address those EL levels appropriately. Well, with only one class per grade level, we would have all EL levels in one class. And that's really challenging for a teacher to be able to properly provide English language development in those types of situations. Additionally, what I would say is we really want to make sure that students who have, may have additional needs, whether it's the support of a counselor, a school psychologist, a school librarian, whatever it may be, have those supports. With a very small school, under 200, we are limited in the resources we can provide. When we provide TATA1 funding, LCFF funding, it's on a per pupil basis. So when you get to really small numbers of students, it's hard to be able to allocate the resources. Whereas students going to Garfield, for example, will have access to the full counselor, a full library support, school psychologists with multiple days, multiple teachers to support the various needs of our students. So educationally, just as schools get small, like Hudson is right now, it's really hard to continue to maintain a high-quality program. And that really is our number one priority. Lastly, before I hand it over, if there are any questions, I want to hand it off to Mr. Zaid. He's been working closely with the Hudson teachers and has a plan to work with the Hudson community that I think would be helpful for you to hear about.
Thank you. I also want to thank our facilities office as well as our chief academic officer, Mr. Moskovitz, for just all of the opportunities to partner our communications department in regards to supporting our families. And so that support began with communication to all of our families. That communication going out to our Hudson and Garfield families on October 11. It also, within that communication, included some parent meetings that are planned. And so we have Hudson's parent meeting planned for Monday, October 21, as well as Garfield's parent meeting planned for Tuesday, October 22, at Hudson. And within that communication, it also spoke to opportunities for parents to visit, not just Garfield, but also Bixby, where our special education programs will be moving to. The opportunity to visit those sites. And then the opportunity for families to take part in a priority school of choice program, if there are other schools that they are interested in. So we're looking forward to having our entire teams out on Monday and Tuesday to provide care and support to our families and to answer any of their questions and to support them with guidance through this process. I'll just also mention that in the spirit of that same collaboration, that same sort of care and support was also provided to the staff at meetings that were held both at Hudson, at Garfield, and then separate meetings that were held by our HR and Personnel Commission to individually meet with staff and to talk to them about their options as well. So a lot of planning, a lot of care, a lot of communication, and a lot of support that has been planned to support.
Move to approve?
It will be, yeah, it will be. Sorry, we've been here a while today.
Did you have a comment or a question? Your light's on.
Yeah. I want to applaud the district on the steps that it's taken to make this very difficult decision. Not difficult because of what the facts are, but difficult because it's always so hard to close a school. I would say particularly on the West Side, because the West Side has always been an area that's been impacted. And so I applaud the district for the way that it's gone about this process. And so I support what it is that we're doing. However, I also can't help but look a couple of years down the road. I think what we know with declining enrollments, what we know about the disappearance of funds is that in the next couple of years, it's not going to be easy. And we're going to have to look at things, including the closing of schools, but maybe many other things that we can do to maintain the integrity and the thoroughness and the educational value of our school district. I'm confident that we're doing that right now. I think that we need, though, to look ahead. Because if we're not looking ahead, we're going to be in trouble. I know that in California, I hear stories from other school board members that I know and other people that I know, that there are many districts that are in trouble, are going to be in trouble for reasons that we will not be in trouble about. But that doesn't mean that we don't have to be thinking about the future, thinking about what's going to be, what's happening now, and how it is that we're going to continue, to be able to continue to provide quality education to our students in our school district. And we're just on a ride now that we have to be aware of and not just think of this as an isolated incident, but as something that's an outcropping of all kinds of things that are happening with declining enrollments and funds that are disappearing or have disappeared.
Dr. Benitez?
Yeah. So just to confirm here, I do want to confirm that this isn't just about facilities and space use. This is also, and probably more importantly, about the best learning environment for students, whether that's classroom level, whether that's additional supports and services. Because the numbers game, we can play all day, right? Especially under the context that Mr. Otto just shared. This is about providing the best learning environment for students, right? So that decision, to me, then, as impacted as that school community is going to be, we're holding true to the values of, what are we providing in terms of the highest quality education and learning environment for students? So thank you for the thoroughness of that presentation.
Yes, and thank you for bringing up those points. At the end of the day, it is about the learning environment, but it's about the community, the people that will be affected. Okay, unless there are further questions or comments. And thank you, everyone, for that presentation. I know it's not easy to deliver news like that or to have to come to that conclusion. But thank you. We are at report of board members, and we will start with Alana.
I have a couple of things that I would like to report on tonight. The first would be at this, this past Thursday, I was able to attend the Nuestra Imagen Community Leadership Award Celebration, hosted by Central Cha with Superintendent Dr. Baker, as well as some other members of the district. It was a really wonderful evening. They were celebrating key leaders in our Long Beach community who have made an impact, a really wonderful and beautiful impact. It was so amazing and uplifting to see the love and the... It was so amazing and uplifting to see the love and the work that these people have put into our community and how much they care about it. And it was wonderful for them to be recognized for that. Additionally, I would also like to touch on the California School Board Association trainings I've been attending. I've been to two so far. I'm not sure how many more I will be able to attend, but these have been really key, very important me learning how to navigate my role as a student board member and helping me to understand and know the best and most effective ways to be able to represent the students and gather their perspectives and bring that to the board. And then lastly, I would like to report on something that happened yesterday at Sato. So for our Sato seniors, we had, our school hosted this day, it was Swarm Application Day. So this day, we were, all the seniors, it was also in accordance with our PSAT testing that we had yesterday. So we were able to basically spend the whole day working on college applications, getting help from multiple college counselors that were there with us as a day dedicated to college applications and to helping us submit those and ensuring that we're, our seniors are getting the help we need. I know for me, it was really helpful, just especially to have that time dedicated to college applications, because I know all of our students are pretty busy and they're doing a lot. So that was a wonderful, wonderful thing that happened at my school. And it's also an invitation to other seniors in the district to continue working on your college applications and to get those turned in. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. And we'll be very interested to hear about your choices and how you're navigating that process as we go along. Dr. Benitez?
Great report, school board member. So as I've shared before here over the last month or so, I had a chance to visit all the schools in the area that I represent in District Three over a three-week window. I met with, I'm going to ballpark it, between 150 and 200 people that came out for between 60 minutes to 90 minutes in the mornings at the school. So just wanted to give a quick summary update and then share sort of an idea that I had for providing a more substantive update that are public and the folks that attended these check-ins could see, because I don't want to take up all the time here on the details of each meeting. So first, thank yous. Thank you to Letitia for helping to coordinate with each school site. But thank you to the principals and the school site staff for hosting me, you know, everything from the way that it was announced, banners on marquees, and that's what I attribute to our involvement and attendance at these meetings. So, you know, securing rooms, all that stuff is not easy in the midst of a full day of instruction and everything that it takes to get ready for that. But I also want to thank the parents, the caregivers, the students that came out during those hours, staff, teachers, counselors, TOSSAs, aides. We had a whole wide breadth of folks attend and share, and that was the point of my check-ins, just to check in to see how things were going, how the academic year had started off, and then answer any questions that were possible to answer at that time. So my plan here is to provide a quick summary of areas and issues that came up, but then to sort of detail out more about, you know, how I'm thinking of proceeding around some of those things that were shared. So I'll, with the help of our awesome communications team, I'll share a summary report with some pictures highlighting those check-ins and some potential next steps. And as I do that, I am going to follow up with our superintendent. There's some low-hanging fruit, sort of tangible things that I think we can address and want to, you know, pick the brain of our superintendent and figure out what are those issues that are best sort of dealt with at the school site level? What are some things that I can follow up with, with parents and parent groups? And then what are some things at the district level that we can sort of help to address? And some of it is communications, to be quite frank, Dr. Baker. I'll also, I also committed to following up with some city staff, including our council members. So I visited schools that are actually in three different council districts. And I'll use an example, right? Trash around schools, safety around schools, things that require sort of our partnership with our city folks in those areas. And then, like I mentioned, lastly, I do want to follow up with the individual school sites and parents and community groups that attended. So here's a quick snapshot of sort of the six areas, seven areas, of things that were shared with me. One was around safety, just comments, questions, concerns, both in-school and out-of-school. And I referenced a couple of those in terms of safe passages and just safety around schools, but also safety within schools. And again, teachers' concerns about their own safety, staff concerned about safety, parents' concerns about their student's safety, and then students, quite frankly, sharing about issues around safety. Second, this is why I've been thinking about you and the team, Dr. Sasa Valderrama, a lot of questions and some communications around our sped programming and our students with disabilities. And again, from teachers' perspective, teaching CCT, to staff at the schools, and also parents and students sharing. And not all, I don't want to just paint this as all issues and concerns, like, why can't we do more of that, or why is that happening at that school and not this school, right? So whole area around our special education. I mentioned and referenced city stuff, and I'm calling it that stuff. A lot of stuff that, quite frankly, our school site staff shared, hey, what can we do about this? What can we do about that around the school? But also our parents and caregivers that, you know, feel the burden back on them, like, hey, I've come to the school and talked about this. I've gone to the city council member and talked about this. And just stuff that I think we can play an active role with our city partners in addressing just issues around schools, parking, we heard about that, you know, issues around drop-off and pickup time, that I think we can move on some of those things. There were things shared by teachers around just classroom issues and classroom needs. And by the same token, there were things shared about parents, about classroom issues and classroom needs. So this is more sort of school site level, very nuanced because of the differences and the variety of experiences at our school, both in terms of level, different issues at middle schools and high schools than at elementary schools, but also across the beauty of our very diverse district. So more school site-specific. A lot of questions, more questions than, hey, we need to fix this or address that. And then just kind of the thinking, how can we do better, both as a district communicating to our school sites, but also at the school site level communicating to parents about things? Some interpretation and translation sort of questions related there. But again, sort of how, you know, where the rubber meets the road, I always, you know, reminded of Dr. Baker saying, best first point of contact is the school, all right? So for these things that come up in my visit at the school, I think some of these things need to be reaffirmed, right? The best point of contact is at the school, both again, from a staff and teacher perspective and administrator, in some case, perspective, but also from parents and students and caregivers. Next area, and I think this came up the most multiple times at each school, and it's the area of community engagement and parent involvement. And in some cases, lack of, or inconsistency with, or a huge motivation around wanting to be more involved, all right? How, what's the best way for me to engage with schools? But also, you know, and again, I'll summarize these, concern from staff about how we can do better to reach out to those parents that have not been able to come to back-to-school night, that have challenges with scheduling parent-teacher conferences, all right? So just, again, the engagement with our communities and our partners and allies. And the last area, and again, I could be much, you know, I'm trying not to be as long-winded. What would I call these? These would be things like, maybe when I meet with Superintendent Baker, we can sort of figure out kind of a laundry list of facilities, sort of fixing this, hey, you know, could we partner with a community partner to do this out of school, and who would we talk to about that? Again, more school-specific, but not in terms of an issue or a concern, more about, how can we make our school community better, right? So a wide range of super awesome ideas being thrown out. So I was like just taking notes, and so again, I want to be able to report back, both on the district level, but also to our school site, to our school-level communities about things that I think we can move on, you know, the theme of the night seems to be like action, but, and then also things that we need to really co-create and collaborate with our school communities on. So just very thankful and appreciative of the opportunity, and more information to come in these areas. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
So I had a very long and informative visit with the Personnel Commission Office a couple of weeks ago. As you know, there have been things that have been going on, and we have an acting director, and I met her and had a long conversation with her, and she showed me all the things that go on in that office. And it was very instructive and very, very interesting. I know we've mentioned it before, but because we've talked about Avalon tonight, I wanted to remind people that we've settled the litigation with regard to Avalon, and therefore that opens the door for us to do things with Avalon or to help Avalon out. We've talked about the problems that they've had out there with the Internet. We've talked about the fact that it's a kind of a stuck 5,000-member population in the city and pretty much on Catalina Island, and there doesn't seem to be much movement upward in terms of the businesses over there. They're largely hospitality businesses and people, the graduates want to go to other places. I was at their graduation this past May, and, you know, lots of kids going into the armed services, lots of people. And I talked to some of them, and, you know, those were what the options were in some ways. And it's a great school, it's a great community. I've represented them for now 20 years, because I represented them for 16 years on the Community College Board, and now one term and the beginning of a second term here. And it just, things have settling down a little bit because of the settlement of this lawsuit. And so I'm encouraged about what the possibilities are over in Avalon. As I announced at the last meeting, I'm working on relationships with PTAs and PTA leaders. I've got a meeting this Friday with the PTA President of Mann, and I have made contact with, and we're scheduling a meeting with the PTA President at Rogers, and we've got a couple other that are trying to queue up. And this is just a listening session, just to find out what they're thinking at their school and how it is that they think that the issues are, just like Dr. Benitez is finding out in his great relationships with schools in his area. And so I'm looking forward to those meetings and learning a little bit more specific about the schools in my district. That's my report.
Thank you. I'm going to start by saying I went to the football game at Millikan Friday night, and I don't know who I'm going to offend. Apologies.
Not me.
Sorry, not sorry. Millikan beat Poly in football Friday night.
Two touchdowns.
Okay, that's part of my report. Also...
Decisively.
Yeah. Let me just say, and most of that happened in the second half. First half was, okay.
And the quarterback played the full game for Millikan and didn't go and play for Poly for half of it.
No, it was impressive for, you know, on behalf of Millikan, I was real impressed. Back to business. So I attended an event for Signal Hill. It was their state of the city. They are celebrating 100 years, 1924, 2024. They played a very clever video of the current mayor, Lori Woods, giving a tour of the city, and then it ends with a dialogue between her and the first mayor of Signal Hill, who was Mrs. Jessie Nelson. I know, the first mayor of Signal Hill was a woman, and currently we have them 100 years apart. Clearly, they've been leading the way for a long time. And then, of course, we have our Jessie Nelson Middle School named after the very first mayor of Signal Hill. That's how I tied it in with our school district. And then I really want to talk about our Partners in Pathway Celebration. And let's see, was that last Friday morning? Anyhow, Partners in Pathways, unlocking success together, celebrating the vital role of key partners. First of all, thank you, fabulous work-based learning video. That was very good, very well done. We had high school students that were there honoring business partners. Fabulous. So honoring the Long Beach Airport with the Key Breakthrough Recognition Award was Junior Gasca from Cabrillo, and he is part of the Law and Justice Pathway at Cabrillo. But he was part of the Long Beach Airport Careers Taking Flight Program, and he said that he was really looking towards a future in law enforcement, which is why he's in CalJAY. But after he had an opportunity to be in the air traffic control booth, that all changed, and now he's got a different focus. So kudos to the Long Beach Airport for being a partner. And then honoring the Grand Prix Association of Long Beach and the Accura Grand Prix of Long Beach was Mackenzie Carr of Sato, and they were awarded the Key Experience Recognition Award, which offered her a behind-the-scenes look at careers in the world of auto racing. So I think that was probably a very fun one. And she's also, oh, she, at Sato, she's also part of the Automotive Engineering Club. I didn't know we had those kind of clubs, but apparently we do, so very fun. And then honoring the Rotary Club of Long Beach was Lauren Kim from CAMHS, and she honored them with the Key Mentorship Recognition Award. And she, during her speech, she was talking about how she was unaware of the opportunities that she would experience at CAMHS, but one opportunity in particular led to the discovery of a passion for a field she had never known. And so the Rotary Club does a camp enterprise, and it's a three-day business-focused experience. So that was an opportunity for our student, Lauren Kim. And then honoring the California Department of Rehabilitation, Eden Kangrow of Lakewood High School, and he honored them with the Key Impact Recognition Award. He talked about being a student with disabilities, and he talked about being afraid to go out in the world and make mistakes, do the wrong thing, say the wrong thing. And he said, well, all of those things happened, all of his fears came true, he made mistakes. He made mistakes along the way. But he also found out, that's okay. It's okay to make mistakes, and he was all right. And he, you know, fell down, got back up, and it was through his experience with the Department of Rehabilitation that he learned with work experience comes that confidence to go forward. I'm telling you, all these kids, just wonderful speakers, and they talked about their own experiences. And then honoring the Long Beach City College with the Key Contributor Award was Chisara Remuso, Madu, and Isabella Nuno from McBride, and they felt that they were lucky, they were able to take college courses for free while they were still in high school. And they both talked about how that boosted their confidence for going to college once they finished with high school. And then finally, honoring the Port of Long Beach with the Key Partner Award was Yamilay Gonzalez and Noe Ramirez of Jordan. And the port began partnering with the ACE Academy And the port began partnering with the ACE Academy in 2021. But they've been partnering with Cabrillo at the, with the Academy of Global Logistics since 2016. And over the years, the port has offered over $1 million in scholarships to our students, over a million dollars. So thank you very much to all of our fabulous business partners for providing opportunities for our students and for our staff for the opportunity to recognize and acknowledge those contributions. It was a wonderful event. There was so much attention to detail. And the hope that, the hope is that these business partners that were in attendance Friday morning will go out like ripples in a pond and touch other business partners to bring in so that more and more of our students benefit from that work experience. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge James Suarez. This is his final board meeting, he's retiring. And, round of applause. Oh, standing ovation, standing ovation. James, this is happening because we want to acknowledge your service to the district. And I want everybody to know, you are the, you are the most gentlemanly person. You are so kind, you are so thoughtful, and you are so helpful. And you truly, truly love these students. So we're going to miss having you around. So thank you, everyone, for joining me in making that acknowledgement. Dr. Baker?
So I will build on that just briefly and make a recommendation that tonight, that you adjourn the meeting in honor of James Suarez, whose impact has been felt across Long Beach Unified School District. It has been said many times, but Jim started as a college aide in the district as an employee. And for all of these years, 34 years has...
And he's retiring already?
Students, yes. So he has left an indelible impact on humans and students across this district. And I will be forever grateful that he is ending his career in service to all of us, and in particular, as my assistant. Thank you. So I hope you'll adjourn the meeting in his honor in just a moment. And I want to fly through just a couple of things that are going on in the district. To highlight tomorrow, we'll be conducting the first-ever test of our Emergency Parent Notification System. This is a way during International Shakeout Day to ensure that our parents are connected to emergencies. So I don't know if this will go out before tomorrow, but I hope that our parents are listening and that they see the value in us testing that message that we can get to every parent when there is an emergency. Also, we have been hosting yesterday and today about 25 participants from the California Legislative Staff Education Institute that brings together staff from the Legislative Analyst Office, from both houses, both parties, to come and learn. They started the day at Cal State Long Beach yesterday with a group of us. They have been out at Cabrillo High School, learning about pathways and CTE and all things high school. And I think they ended the day at Long Beach City College. And throughout, we have had a team that has been sharing the work of Long Beach Unified School District, Long Beach City College, and Cal State Long Beach in a way that we can all feel very proud of, the education that happens in our community. In addition to celebrating disability history awareness, in October, we celebrate LGBTQIA+ History Month, which highlights the history and achievements of LGBTQ+ identifying people. And so proud to see many of our schools celebrating our students in that way and their families. Two other announcements, November 1st, I'll say this every time, is a pupil-free day. So our students will not be in session so that our teachers and other staff across the district, including classified staff, have an opportunity to learn in service to what we want for our students. And so a great, a great day for them. And then lastly, this has been Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I'm wearing pink today as part of my acknowledgement as a breast cancer survivor. And just want to express deep appreciation for the many offices, schools that raise money and build awareness around early detection for breast cancer. And I think it's wonderful that our students participate because that is the way that we make things just commonplace to talk about them. And it really reflects on rates of early detection. So thanks to them. And so already made my recommendation to adjourn in James's honor, so I will leave it at that.
Thank you. So this concludes the business for tonight's meeting. We will adjourn in honor of James Suarez. And our next regular meeting is Wednesday, November 6. Thank you, everyone, for being with us. Good night.